Will now be recorded.
Testing, all right. We'll do a call to order here. If you'll join with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call.
Councilmember Kay.
President.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
Mayor Hagan.
Here.
So it sounds like we have a presentation today. A city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As we pull up the presentation, this is our commitment to share with the council and the community quarterly how we are tracking against our strategic plan. We adopted a strategic plan in March of 2025. This is the second quarterly update that we will share here. So if we go to the next slide. The council will force no. And to remind the community, there are four strategic priority areas.
Thank you.
The first one is economic development. The second is fiscal stability. The third is public safety. And the fourth is infrastructure. I will go over economic development and then we will turn it over to the team and then back to me on the four strategic priority areas. Go back. Sorry. So we have our symbols here which show you kind of where we're at. The first one, we have established an economic development committee. We had our first meeting last month, so that is complete. The other symbol here is on track. It's green and on track. We are in the process of developing an economic development strategic plan. We discussed that at the first meeting of the EDC. The EDC decided to wait until we bring on our staff member focused on economic development so that that individual could look at the RFP, the Request for Proposals, to hire consultant to do the plan. So we expect that to go out probably in October. We will retain a consultant hopefully kind of end of the year. And then we'll have the bulk of 26 to prepare that plan, which we are looking forward to. We've committed to meeting with 10 businesses each year. This is so we understand what the experience has been like for the business community. New businesses, old businesses, big businesses, small businesses. I have met with five so far and have a couple this month. And so we are on track to meet with the 10 this year. And then invest in economic development, kind of create a program. We have set aside, the council has set aside some funding for economic development, not only for the plan development, but also incentives or anything that the Economic Development Committee and the council sees fit. So as we get into more meetings for the Economic Development Committee and as we start to prepare and finalize the economic development strategic plan, we can identify exactly what this program, economic development program, looks like. And we are on track for that one as well. So maybe we'll just pause after each one to see if there's any questions. If not, we will move on to the next slide.
Okay, the next one is mine. And you'll see prominently that big red X in there. And the only one with the big red X. But no, we did adopt our balanced budget for 2526. That's the budget we're in now. Next task for that is our budget book. That has kind of been put on the back burner several times as we've had other things like audits and things come up that were very time dependent. So we are still working on that. We've adopted a, this clean audit is, we can have an end in sight. They brought us a partial draft last week. I had to send some of that back, answer a few more questions. But it's still chugging along real slow. I'm not happy with the speed, but the work that they're doing seems very well and very thorough. So I'm happy with the work, just not the speed. So hopefully we'll get something soon.
Can you remind me when this company started working on our audits? How long, or this particular audit, I suppose?
It was.
324. Like how many months has it been?
November of last year, so almost a year.
And then they'll have one more backlog audit before we get to.
Our current year that just closed, we closed that last Friday.
Okay.
So I'll have five or six days worth of looking over it. And then I would be able to hand that over to the auditor, but they're not done yet. So.
Got it.
Yeah, so there's kind of the, the cars are on the track. We're just kind of waiting for them to get that first report out for various reasons. And then.
Okay.
The hope is that we go, we go forward with the next audit and we just, you know, keep on checking, but.
Just trying to gauge how soon until we're current, right? And so we can get on a regular routine every year so that we are always current, so.
And the goal is to have that audit done by December 31st.
Okay.
I would like to have it done by the end of November. But that would mean I'd have to get them, all the product that we've done throughout the year by the end of September in order that they could be done with it. And that's in a really, in a perfect world. So more than likely, we're going to be looking at 1231 as our target and we'll see how close we get.
Okay.
That would satisfy a lot of our different partners, the banks, all the different audits for transit. Everybody wants this report, not just us. So there's a lot of things that are, that are hinging on it. Once we do get on track, it'll just be fine. It'll just go smooth sailing from here on. They're happy with the current year's work. They're just not with the prior year's work, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and just to elaborate on that point, as the auditor has expressed, the difficulty has been, they're not just a slow company. The difficulty has been retracing past audits, past, you know, fiscal sheets and those types of things. Because of, I don't want to say because of the work of the last auditor, but there's been some, some difficulty in retracing. And so the next one will go much, much smoother, much, much quicker because there's no retracing. It's their past work, if we maintain this company, which I believe we will. It's their past work and so it'll go much, much quicker.
Okay, thank you for the update. Sorry.
Good question. So fair to say you don't think this is because of anything like nefarious or anything like that? You think it's just because of backlog of, of trying to figure out, maybe not necessarily sloppy, but, but maybe not as organized as you are as far as the, the funds? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Current auditor, what they have, they're trying to deconstruct several past years. And so in doing that, you kind of do it blind. And I've helped them with it and gone, oh, okay, well, yeah, if you take this number and this number and this number, here you go, that's what you're looking for. And so I'll answer these questions for them. I'm like, oh, that's not the way it should be. And I'm like, yes, I know, but these three numbers equal the number you're looking for. So it's down to that.
So it's more of a difference in reporting, that's the issue? Okay. Just double checking.
Yeah, it's a multitude of issues. It's unfortunate because it makes them look bad. It makes me look bad. It makes, you know, the whole process gets drawn out. But I think at the end of it, it will, it'll be worth it because we'll have a nice, clean audit and we'll have nice, clean audits going forward that won't take a year. Because we're ready to go right now with our last year.
I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I don't think it's you, so.
Well, thank you. It's starting to look like me. It's really taken a long time. But no, they, they are working and we do have almost daily contact with, with them. And it's just, it's just painfully slow.
Okay, thank you.
So Lynda, does it make sense to give them a hard and fast deadline?
Tried, it didn't work.
Are there repercussions in their contract?
Not so much in their contract, but in their scope of work. They have a lot of state and federal guidelines that they have to follow. So they can't just produce like a quick and dirty report. It has to be a good, solid report. There's ways where they can cut a few corners, but not many. This is a, you know, a financial document that banks and everything are going to use. So I see their point. They have to be precise. The report has to be pristine, pretty much. But it's just taking a really long time. My next item, three, does not have a red X. It's our develop investment strategy and grow earned revenue by 50%. This area is going well. We have our investment person, his name is Greg. He is looking at coming out and speaking with us either in October or November, if the council would like, depending on timing, just to give us kind of an overview of what to expect for the coming year. But right now, we are on, on track. The investment piece is doing well. What else? And our calpers, we're going to talk about that later also, reducing the calpers liability by 10%. We have done that. We're on track for this year with the instruction that we were given by council to go ahead and get that piece done. So everything else is good. We just need that audit.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you.
So my first goal as part of the strategic plan is to achieve 100% officer staffing levels by December 31st of 25. We're on track for, potentially on track for this. There are some issues that are kind of outside of my control as far as filling positions. We are currently, one reserve was just appointed full-time officer Maripau. So he just took a full-time spot that opened up. And then we are bringing, we have another reserve, Escalante, who scored well in the interview process. And then we have five additional that did very well in the interview process. We just had the hiring process and they're being brought on as reserve officers. And then they'll be able to roll directly into any openings that pop up. Since the implementation of this, we've lost three people. We've brought one on and then we're planning on bringing two more on as soon as we can. And we are, got them, getting them lined up to where they can roll straight into full-time spots.
So what percentage of staffing levels are we at currently, Chief?
Two out of eight, so what would that be, 60%? What?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent. And then, well, the five that are coming on are going to be, they are agreed to come on as a reserve capacity. So they'll be operating in a reserve capacity. We'll be able to supplement full-time until those full-time spots open up. And then they are on the eligibility list. So as soon as those spots do officially open up, they can be rolled directly into a full-time spot. Maripau went from reserve on Sunday to full-time on Monday. He's already completed his FTO program. He was already covering Officer Jamal's shifts as a reserve. So he was working as a reserve officer covering Jamal's shifts. And we just essentially appointed him as full-time. And that's going to be my plan kind of going forward. If we have any vacancies, they'll be filled with reserves until which point we can make them full-time. Then increase officer tenure. With two of the officers that were no longer with us as of last year, that kind of brought the average down. Believe at the, at the implementation of the, at the implementation of the strategic plan, we're about one point, we averaged 1.8 years of officer tenure. Now we are at 1.6. However, if you calculate Officer Maripau's 22 years of experience, not just his time with Escalon, it brings the average up to closer like 4.6. So you can tweak those numbers to make it look like it's been achieved, but he's still new to Escalon. But it, what we're looking for, it's not necess, we do want the years with Escalon, but we're more looking for that experience. And he definitely brings that experience onboard. And then maintain no more than one probationary officer on the force. When we first implemented the strategic plan, we had five officers in their probationary period. We currently have three. And two of those are going to, are projected to clear probation in October. So that would bring it, bring us down to actually two. But again, in this Officer Maripau, I don't consider him a probationary officer. Probationary officer is before you get your basic post certificate. You've got his advanced, his supervisory, and I believe he's even got his management certificate. So with all of his experience, I don't consider him a probationary officer, even though technically he's on probation with the Escalon Police Department. Come October, it'll be Officer Gunter and then whichever, whatever new officer we bring on that'll be probationary officers. So that, we are not quite there, but very close.
Any questions for Chief? Well, Chief, keep up the good work. You did a great job also.
Thank you, I'm trying.
Well, I can tell. We're off to public works here.
I'll take this one.
No, 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 we want to hear from Justin.
So we are, the primary goal here are the two large infrastructure projects, the surface water project and the wastewater treatment plant project. For number one, we are not quite on track. We were lined up hopefully to secure some money from the Bureau of Reclamation. We are unfortunately not successful in that grant application. And so we do have a funding gap, approximately $4 million, although we are looking into the numbers a little more closely than before. And we'll see what that looks like. But council basically directed, until we close the gap, at least a little bit further, no more forward progress on that. So right now, we are looking at additional grant opportunities, low or no interest loans. And we're potentially looking at what would reallocation of some of our allocation of the surface water look like to a different jurisdiction? If there's some funding opportunities from that avenue? All to close the gap, to get the project to fruition, which we believe is, is council's direction at this point. The second major infrastructure project is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. We have a very old antiquated plant. It is still operating well, but it is, it is old and it's tired. We had a notice of violation and a cease and desist order dating back to about 2014. We are making a lot of progress in the state compliance's eyes in terms of the operations of that plant. We're getting less of the odor complaints. We have less issues with our berm and intrusion and those types of things. So we have done a good job in operations. And now the state, in essence, is not breathing down our backs to get to a new plant or to re-up our permit with them. So this has given us an opportunity to take what has been coined the $40 million project, the plant upgrade, and phase it a little bit more, stretch it out over more years. A piece of that is working with industry, because industry owns, owns a big piece of it. And so we are working with industry to get them to ensure that there's equal share in funding of, of this upgrade project. In large parts, now we're maybe able to even separate the two projects, where industry can accommodate their side of the house and we can accommodate our side of house. And that's what we're focused on right now, the domestic side. Phasing the domestic side, what's most important? And then we can move forward with those, those improvements as well. And then if we do that, we can do a rate study and, and try to get the burden to the ratepayers down as much as, as possible and spread that, those improvements over time. So that is currently what we are working on with item number two. And I would say we are on track for that at this moment. The last item is our sort of annual commitment, although we won't be able to do it forever, of completing six government improvement projects. We did have a sum of money saved up over the last several years. And we've been, you know, knocking the, that money down, implementing about six projects per year over the last couple of years. We are on track with this and we expect to be completed with it by the end of the year. Just to talk about the seven projects, Dent Sidewalk, Yosemite Avenue sidewalk projects have been completed in, in this calendar year. Main Street sidewalks will start technically end of this year and go into the next year. But the only reason we have delayed it even that far is because of the schedule at the Main Street Park. We could have been implementing that already, but we wanted to wait until after the events at Main Street Park are through. Well 1A, we expect to complete this year. The 2025 pavement rehabilitation completed earlier this month. And then the library project as well, and we expect that to be complete this month as well. So those are the six projects and that is the update for infrastructure.
I know you've inherited a lot of things to work on and I think you're really doing a good job keeping focused. So I know we haven't hit everything, so it's not perfect, but definitely heading in the right direction. So keep up the good work. Any other questions up here? We're done with our presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Did anyone from the audience want to make a statement? Oh, okay. Then we'll go to consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number two.
Two, okay. Anything else? The community, anyone want to pull something? No? All right, we'll pull two and we'll vote on, who? No.
Okay.
Matter. Probably matters from the audience, depending on what you're trying to bring up. So we'll pull two and we'll vote on three and four. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar, or consent items two, or items three and four.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. We'll pull two.
Just a note, last meeting under agenda item number seven, the second motion that was made, it's noted in the minutes that I abstained from voting on the second motion that was motioned by Councilmember Kay and seconded by the mayor. That's incorrect. I actually was a yea on that vote. And I request that to be amended.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everyone good with that? So we need to humor a vote, right? Anyone want to?
With that, I'll move to approve consent calendar item number two as amended.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second that as well.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. Move on to staff communication, or sorry, yeah, staff communications. I guess we'll start with city manager.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Slenda.
Good evening again. Okay, so we have, the first item is our treasures report for August. And we'll notice that you have made this a little bit easier to read. It's a little bit bigger. Nothing really new here, other than it's just expanded so that you don't have to use an actifying glass for it. And we're able to see a few summaries of the different fund types, total enterprise, total enterprise sewer. So if there were questions as to how much actual cash we have available for these items, you could look at this and find a couple of different areas a little easier. What else did we have here? See. That's pretty much all I have for the treasures report piece, if there's any questions.
Any questions? No? Okay. Chief?
So our officers have been doing some extra patrols for the tomato trucks running the stop sign on Ori. Some of the, they haven't really got many violations. Some of the things that have been noted are, the limit line for that intersection is before the railroad tracks. So a lot of the tomato trucks, they'll stop before the railroad tracks and then they won't stop again before entering the intersection, which they've already done their due diligence or they've done their legal requirements by stopping. They stop prior to railroad tracks and then they go over. It can appear as though the stop sign is being ran. Another issue is there's not really a good place for officers to sit and observe that intersection without the trucks being able to see them. They're at a higher level, they're looking for cops. And so when our cops, when the officers are out there working, they're not really seeing violations. And it could be because either they're stopping, which is unlikely, or it's because they're being seen by the officers and then they're stopping because they see the officers. I've parked the patrol vehicle back there just to kind of look as though there's an officer in there working traffic. When I was parking it there today, I did notice a couple of trucks see me and came to more full stops than I think they otherwise would have. So hopefully that'll help address the issue a little bit.
Chief? On that note, I mean, obviously, we don't want them parking on the tracks. But as limited use that we have on those tracks, would it be very difficult to add another limit line on the other side of the track? Given the infrequent use of that railroad crossing?
Well, you also have a violation of stopping on tracks. There's a sign there that says, do not stop on tracks. Yes, it is very limited use and it's really only used, especially down that far, when pecker is getting deliveries. So even when they are using these tracks, they rarely ever go past Ori. But it's still a railroad track and it's more of a vehicle code and a federal regulation. And it's something that's in our control as far as allowing them to do that.
It seems like it's an accident waiting to happen. And I, but I understand your hands are tied as well.
And the railroad tracks in this town create various issues as far as traffic is concerned, as I'm sure you're.
And in your opinion, do you see any way to mitigate, mitigate that? Or do you feel like it is what it is at this point?
When I was parked, when I was parked there, I kind of sat there for about five minutes and was watching the traffic. I saw two trucks go through and both of them, they stopped at the limit line and then they stopped again before they entered the roadway. So it's not something I'm going to tell them they have. I would go and tell them they have to stop again and stop with their trailer over the tracks. But I think with, when they see a cop car there, they think that they have to and they're a little more cautious than they are stopping.
I don't know if you've thought about this, but it, it may be who, just having our city manager contact the plant manager and reminding the trucking companies, hey, when you're coming out of Ori, yes, technically, there's not a stop sign there, but you know, McHenry is a major thoroughfare. I don't know.
Whenever you start getting into issues like that, you start looking at liability. If we are telling them that they have to stop with their trailers over the tracks and a train does come through and the arms come down on their vehicle or God forbid, a vehicle gets hit and they say, well, we were told by the city that we need to stop there with our trailers over the tracks. We know we're not supposed to stop there. We were directed by the city to do that and it caused this accident. There's a liability aspect that you don't want to start directing people to violate the law.
Essentially, we'd be asking them to break the law at that point.
So fair to say parking the police vehicle is about all you can do?
I will say, since your decoy car has been there, not one time has somebody pulled out in front of me, which.
It's working.
And they, they were on a roll there for a minute with me.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, we went out there and I noticed one of our officers was over at Dollar General and it's like, all the trucks are stopping, what the heck? And it's like, oh, they probably see the car. So that's what gave me the idea and it seems like it's been working.
Yep. I agree. I think that the decoy car is definitely doing its job. I think the only other thing that, you know, we may possibly be able to do is Officer Gek on his little motorcycle. That's a little harder to spot than a car. You wanted to patrol that area.
On the motorcycle, I think he stopped too.
Yeah. Doesn't surprise me. He's a little harder to see in that way.
Any other questions for Chief? Or Chief, you have more?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So there were other issues that was brought up with the scooters, kids riding the scooters around town. This was something that was an issue kind of over the summer. It was recognized by our officers that kids were riding their scooters. It wasn't too much of a problem, but it was starting to become a problem. They were directed to provide warnings, to give warnings. They were giving warnings all summer. At the beginning of the school year, officer, or on, what is it, June? At the beginning of the school year, officer, or on, what is it, June? On June 10th, we posted information on the City of Escalon, or Police Department Facebook page about kind of the scooters, and what you can do, and how you have to obey the laws, and which ones require driver's licenses, which ones don't. Most of the ones that the kids are driving are technically considered motorcycles, and they need a driver's license to drive. Again, we weren't doing really enforcement, we were doing more education, giving warnings.
What do you think about reaching out to the school?
At the beginning of the year, Officer Harrison, they put on a presentation at the school, and he did a presentation on scooters. The problem wasn't getting resolved. He warned a kid. Two days later, he caught the kid again. He ended up towing his bike, siding the kid in towing his bike, and since then, we haven't really had any issues. We got reports of one on Coley a few days later. Officers have been providing extra patrol looking for it, and we haven't really gotten any issues since.
Sounds good.
And then there were some questions asked about skate parks last week. Reached out to Ripon, Oakdale, and Riverbank. So the Ripon Skate Park, their hours of operation are 6:00 to 8:30, 6:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. When their skate park first opened, they were having quite a bit of problems, fights, vandalism, drug use, trespassing, and obstruction of justice type stuff. They cracked down when it first opened, and now they have very few problems. An occasional fight, occasionally get calls or reports of kids out there smoking weed.
This is in Ripon?
This is in Ripon. Not really burdensome. Oakdale Skate Park, their hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. They still have quite a bit of problems. They get assault with deadly weapons, kids hitting each other with the skateboards and scooters, vandalism, trespassing, and homeless people loitering at the, at the skate park. The vandalism is primarily in their bathrooms. They actually had to close their bathrooms down for a while because of damage that was caused. And then Riverbank, their hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they get occasional reports of kids fighting, and reports of kids smoking marijuana, but generally, they don't really have a lot of calls for service. So Oakdale has more of a problem, but they've also got hours of operation that are much later than Ripon and Riverbank.
Any other questions up here? For chief? All right, we'll go to Public Works.
Good evening, council. Also, just kind of following up on a few questions from last council. One of the questions, we're benches around the community, there's kind of a lot that kind of goes into the benches around the community, where you put them, you know, the ADA requirements that it goes into them, the price of the benches, feasibility just doesn't seem like it's there on the benches. If you want us to look into it further, we can, but as of right now, it's just, it's kind of, need a lot more direction on where to go with that, if that's going to be something we're going to move forward with. I guess we're having some sprinklers issues in Swanson Park. We have since gone over there, and we did adjust some. Seems like periodically, I'm sure with practices going on, kids will see sprinklers on, kind of move them to do certain things. It seems that solely, that's kind of what it was at the time, so I feel like we've gotten that taken care of. Non-functional crosswalks, we do have two crosswalks that are having some issues. Unfortunately, it's our two newer ones on McHenry Avenue, or excuse me, Escalon Avenue, but they are still under warranty until October 31st. The company has came out, looked at, see what was going on, have ordered a few parts, those should be coming into, coming in soon. They work, one side works, they're just not communicating with each other, so both sides aren't communicating. So some lights do still come on, which is nice, but just not 100% functional there. Also, there was a comment about a dead tree, and a tree that was on the way of a stop sign at First and Oklahoma. We did trim up that tree quite a bit, spoke to the homeowner about getting that tree removed. The funds are a little tight on their end, they're going to do what they can, but we're definitely going to keep an eye on it, make sure it does stay safe, nothing does fall on the roadway or sidewalk, but as of right now, that tree is safe and clear from all stop signs. Also, the question for funding source for the backstops back in '21. The funding source that that was paid for out of was our park impact development fees is where those three backstops that were installed were funded out of. Other than that, if you have any questions?
Mr. Collins, just, just a suggestion. But primarily, the major walkers in this city are our seniors. It may behoove us to reach out to members of the senior fund bunch, and ask them primarily where they walk, to get, get a better idea. I know they walk around Brentwood Park, but we also have some walkers on this side of town as well, so it may behoove us to just have that conversation and find out the routes that they walk.
Okay, thank you. Will do.
I'll kind of follow up on, on that. My, my suggestion, you know, is rather than us trying to plant park benches all over town, us to identify a park to set up, you know, benches at, that we could, you know, kind of designate it as a walking park for the elderly in our community that are, you know, trying to do so and get their exercise in. So, you know, just a food for thought.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Justin, at Public Works. Anything you want to add to that? City manager?
No, but I do have a couple of reports. And maybe just for clarity, during the LLD discussion, there was questions of where the Belatera, Swans, Shadowwood backstop was funded, and we have confirmed that was used with development impact fees, not LLD funding from the Belatera community.
I'm sorry, is that, it's on California, is that correct? And that was where the bench was requested for? Was that correct, maybe last meeting, meeting before?
No, I think the folks that were requesting the bench live over here by Swanson.
They were wanting one at Swanson?
Yeah. There was reference to a bench that was removed at Shadowwood Park, but the request came from a prior meeting about places to rest basically during a walk.
Okay.
Just, the Belatera backstop was not funded through the LLD, it was funded through development impact fees. And then just to follow up on a couple of items that have been raised recently in my area, the, there was a resident who requested some swings in Swanson. We are currently navigating that issue. There's been a request out to the resident to see if additional improvements would want to be made in that park, and I believe that resident is talking with some of the neighbors to get that response. So before we go to a 218, if that's what we're in fact going to do, before we go out to a 218, make sure we have every improvement that's wanted or desired in that park first. As you know, as part of the Measure P funding, we have been looking at ways to improve the community broadly, but specifically parks, and one of the things that has been requested numerous times is an outdoor basketball court. We have a partial one, it's almost full width and length in lada, but otherwise, there's no real accessible basketball courts, and so the conversation with the Swanson group is, would there be desire to see a basketball court go in? So as soon as we get word from the resident, we will move that process forward as appropriate. And then, there's been a lot of calls to level the grass at Main Street Park. We are now exploring whether we can do that as part of the sidewalk project. So we are waiting to get the bids in, which should come in early October. If we can fit it into the project, we will explore that. That would be the ideal situation. If we can't, because of cost, then we will look at other revenue sources, including Measure P potentially. We did, through Public Works, get a bid on that work, on that effort, and have a reasonable price, we think, so we can, again, explore the best option for the city moving forward to really level out the grass. If we do that, we would time it with the Main Street site, park sidewalk project, so it'd essentially be kind of mid-December through the end of February is when we would do that work, same time that the sidewalk is being installed.
I know the Measure P group is kind of working through that, figuring out, you know, what the citizens kind of truly want, but it might be a good idea to kind of, you know, let them know realistically, like the community, what things are realistically, you know, we're ca, realistically, we're capable of actually delivering with those funds. Because I know, you know, when you think of putting things in, you would think it would be inexpensive to do some things, but when you actually, you know, peel back the layers of it, it's actually a lot more expensive than you would think when you start dealing with government funds. So just something to maybe, you know, put out there so that there's, we're not having these ideas that seem like they're grandiose, that may not be realistic, you know?
Yeah, agree. Good point.
Okay. Anything else up here?
Just one more last thought. The flag football number, so our program is growing. We had almost 40 new players or additional players from last year, that's over a 10% growth, including 25 new female players. So the flag football program is growing, I think that's fantastic. Actually, all the recreation programs have been growing over the last several years, which is a good thing, but just wanted to call out those numbers in particular.
That's a good thing. And can we say, like in district meetings, we're talking about, you know, getting the schools kind of, you know, working with the community, and they seem very interested in that. So just want the community to know that. Okay, we had, any, any questions for staff from the community? And you had said you had some questions, right? Is it in regards to what we're talking about later, or is it?
Matters presented.
Is it, and, because we're going to go to matters presented from the audience, so I just wanted to make sure we got to your questions.
It's about the football.
Okay.
About the measure.
Okay. So you'll, you'll probably speak in this next segment. Okay. So matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. Alrighty. Matters from the audience.
I have not.
Okay. Just so you're aware, it's a five-minute...
No problem.
You're not surprised?
You know, should be short and sweet. My name is Lucas Eggers. I am a resident of 1690 Autumn Lane. I surround Reed Manor, Reed Manor Park, and there's proposed dog recreation area that's supposed to be in the works. I would like to voice my opinion for an opposition to this, as well as my neighbors that are Mr. K. came around our neighborhood last weekend and was talking about this projected project, and he was saying that there was a poll taken for the residents there of, you know, hey, it's been in favor for this, that everyone is, is on board on this, and he was going to the neighbors and all that. Great, that's awesome. I appreciate having somebody come on by about proposed, you know, projects that are there. My concern is that the, that fiscal, I would say, we're talking about a ton of different projects here in this city that would be better funded than having a dog park there. I'm a dog owner, so are my neighbors. We love dogs. Love having, you know, the parks there, being able to use it for walking our dogs, you know, get them socialized and all that. I don't believe that this town is large enough to actually support such a dog park. I believe that we should use our fiscal responsibility to our youth programs instead of this dog, proposed dog park. We don't want to just come on over here and complain. We also want to give, you know, solutions to problems. So my neighbor, Mr. Levon, he has done some research on, you know, pros and cons of this, and we've, we've noticed that there's a lot of cons to it. So I'm sure you guys have been emailed about this, and I don't know if we've gotten a response about this, and we're kind of concerned about that as well. So we would like to actually be able to talk about this a lot more. I don't know what your timeline is, when this is supposed to be proposed, and when it's supposed to be going through, but we'd definitely like to, well, we're in opposition to it. Like I say, youth programs are much better to spend that money on, and spend it on, on the kids that are out there. We enjoy having kids out in that park. We believe that if you take a third of that park out there, you're taking it away from the kids. That money would be better spent on, there's potholes in that park that are ankle spraining. They're, they're pretty deep, they're about five, five inches. I wouldn't want to see a kid get hurt out there, or myself, but also that, there's park equipment that needs to be updated in these parks as well. They've been out there several years, there's vandalism on them. It's nice to, you know, get that taken care of as well. But there are other ways to spend this money than a dog park, so.
I do believe that they're doing more investigation into seeing what are the options, so I don't think it's a hard decision as of now. It's more investigating the different ideas that the Measure P group would have in combination with things that have been brought up through the council, to look at pros and cons of everything and decide, you know, where would be the best direction for those funds, and then also, keeping in mind, this would be hopefully something that's rolling over every year, so you might start with a priority A, you know, and end up at Z at some point.
That's cool. We believe that there are other priorities that this can be funded other than a dog park. So, and that's pretty much the, the consensus of our community in that area. I have gone around to all of our neighbors as well, and no one on that block is wanting that dog park, so, you know.
Appreciate your input on that, definitely.
Yeah, so clarifying question. Just, just to be clear, you are against all dog parks in all of the parks in all of Escalon, not just a dog park in this particular...
Personally, I am. There, some of the neighbors have also put together kind of a packet of where proposed, you know, dog parks could be, that were better suited in that area. But I believe fiscally, it's not a good idea to do that. I, I believe that it could be better spent somewhere else, especially, you know, supporting the youth. We've got great youth programs, they're growing, and that's awesome. I think that's great for the community. I want to give props for that, but we'd also need to fund all that, especially if they're growing. So it sounds like my time's up.
Thank you.
Eighteen seconds.
You have 45 seconds if you wanted to elaborate, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to add to that, or have a different thought?
So like you said, I appreciate that Councilman K. came around to actually talk to people. I wasn't home when he came. My name's Tony Fernandez. I live at 1684 Autumn. My front door would look directly at the area proposed to fence off the dog park. I'm opposed also, and I did email Councilman K. It's only been a week, I know, but he didn't respond, but I did print off what I emailed him, and it's just my main points of why I'm opposed to it, and I've made a copy for all the council members, if I could leave it with you. Main reasons, it's, when it rains, it's a lake. I don't know what they would do to repair that in order to make it be a dog park, but it's, it's a lake when it rains, and I love that. I call it Lake Autumn. And then just all the kids, like when we left today to come here, there were two practices in the park, and one... there were two practices in the park and one of them was right in the area of the proposed dog park. Sometimes we have three soccer practices at one time in the park on certain evenings. They just go straight across the park. But mostly just because I don't want it outside my front door. And I have three dogs of my own. So this is my email response.
I, I do want to apologize to you about not getting back to you.
No worries.
My, uh, my day job was quite busy last week and I ended up off the, uh, the second half of the, the week, so.
Like I said, it had only been a week, so thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Kurt, did you have something?
Mayor, City Council, just a quick note to Slenda is, I brought it up several times. The, uh, inter, uh, loans for, uh, the community, uh, development, excuse me, the, uh, community center and this building, 1.55 million, uh, loans, uh, are those part of the debt service, uh, that you currently list in the budget?
No, those are not. Um, those particular loans are to be paid with, uh, our DIF fees, our developmental impact fees. And at the time that that particular, um, process was set up, I believe the city was under the impression that they would have a lot more DIF fees than what we, what has actually happened. So there isn't enough money being brought in in those DIF fees to make a dent in, in those. So at some point we will have to address them differently than what is currently set up. Right now there's just, there's no money there between the, the DIF fees.
It would be a good idea to probably get, I mean, I know you've been putting out a lot of different fires, figuring it out. But when we get to a point where we can, I think it would be prudent to address it.
That will be a, a separate proposal. I'm sure we'll all have to discuss it at length. The only other area really to pull that money fund would, would be the general fund at this point. Unless we come up with some other solve for, uh, old problem that's been there for a long, long time. Yeah, it is something that needs to be addressed.
But we agree. I mean, we will, um, as you mentioned, Mayor, we're putting out a number of fires right now. It is on our radar. It's on our list. It may not be imminent or immediate, but, um, we will definitely put some thought around it and, and put a plan proposal together for the council's consideration.
I raise the issue only because, uh, as we get measure P money in, uh, measure P was, uh, tossed around about what was, uh, needed for the city. We had a bare bones budget. We needed to support our police department, get vehicles for public works, get new computer systems in here. I don't think, here are those things being discussed as far as revenues for measure P going to. This loan is 13 years old. It was a 20-year loan. Money's taken from transportation, public works, and of course, the In-Lu fund. And they haven't been paid back. The interest, the city has taken money, uh, from the funds and paid back the interest with it. So essentially up until Slenda got here, they were robbing these funds. They weren't paying it back. These things still there. They had a 20, a 20-year lifespan. So we're like seven years out. Nothing's been done up to this point. What do we do? What happens at 20 years? Do you refinance? What would be the deal?
In simple terms, the nature of the money transfer is from one development impact fund to another. So left pocket, right pocket, back and forth the money goes. Interest is not one of the things that you can pay with developmental impact fees. So in the past, there may have been a practice of doing that. I have cleaned that up. Uh, there's certain things that you cannot do with certain funding sources and paying interest. It's just one of those things. It's not one of the tenants. It doesn't have a nexus. So you can't use that funding for, for that. So we have a very specific nexus report that tells us what we can use our developmental impact funds for. It's quite old. We may need a new one, but it's still in, in place and, um.
Sounds like something we'll have to investigate a little bit deeper.
When we talk about In-Lu housing, you know, In-Lu fund for low income housing, uh, the housing report comes out. And when I was on the planning commission, I had to have it, uh, information, uh, corrected because they, they included how much money that inter loan, inter fund loan was in that budget, uh, in the treasury report. And that was not true. Instead of having $900,000 in In-Lu, there was like 80,000. And so we can't support low income housing with that fund because the city has taken those monies out. And I just, I just think at some point we need to be paying them back. Maybe include it as debt service that we, we list in the, uh, treasury report, uh, and the budget for this building and, uh, community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
To the, to Ms. Fernandez that handed this, um, I just briefly glanced at it and then we can't get into discussions, but I would just like to request that you stick around if your schedule allows for agenda item number seven. Please.
Okay. All right. Um, no more matters from the audience. All right. We'll bring it back. And we don't have any public hearings today, so we'll go to administrative matters. We'll start with number six.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. This item is a consideration of the location and deal points for an MOU between the city and the Escalon Parks Foundation. This item is a continuation of a prior discussion at council at the last meeting. And in essence, it is to finalize some of the questions and moving parts raised at the last meeting as it pertains primarily to location and again, the deal points for a memorandum of understanding. We all understand that there will be different opinions on responsibility and, and location. And the task before us is, you know, really to weigh in, um, and make a decision that's in the best interests for the community or of the community. So this item goes way back, um, back to October 2011. Um, the city council had discussed, uh, different locations for a skate park. And, you know, some were around Main Street, some were around, um, Hogan and his park. And around that time is when the group formed, the, the Escalon Parks Foundation formed. It was really seeded and, and started through the city. It has since become its own entity. It has since become its own 501(c)(3) and is now, I would say for the most part, fully separate from the city. Except that, um, there is some connection with the city manager and the city manager has, um, some authority, I guess, or, or some decision-making power on the board structure and, and board members. But again, it's a, a separate 501(c)(3). So move forward, um, in 2015, again, they were looking at location and, and deal points for an MOU. Those discussions were ongoing. Again, it was a couple of different locations in Hogan and his park. There was a, a location in the existing park. Subsequently in 2016, with a, a master plan that was done for the park, it was into the expansion area. So you can see this park location has moved several times. Main Street, Hogan and his, different places in, in Hogan and his. And again, deal points for an MOU have, have gone in, in different iterations. So it stalled a, a couple of times. In 2019, again, the conversation was picked up. So almost every four years, it seems like conversation was, was picked up again. Talk about location, talk about, uh, MOU deal points and fast forward to 2024, 2025 and, and this conversation. So again, we're talking about location and, and MOU deal points. What has changed in this time is that EPF does have enough funds raised to deliver a standalone portion of, of the project. It's no longer the entire project. They have raised over 125,000 and they feel that they can develop a standalone component of the skate park. And that's why this conversation is, has been brought back up. So it's, it's really direct. Um, there are two possible locations that the council talked about last time. One is where the master plan called for the skate park to be, and that's up against Escalon Belota Road in the expansion area, so not part of the city right now. The other is on the west side of the temporary existing overflow parking lot. And so there's pros and cons of each. What, um, council directed us to do is kind of look at some of those costs and some of the things that would be needed. So in the master plan proposed area, we would need to extend sidewalk, uh, up to that area. That's about 100 feet of sidewalk. Uh, we believe that will cost some odd amount, $6,000. And we believe that relocating, um, or shifting some of the parking lot over to ensure that we accommodate the size of the parking lot now would cost about 7,500. So a, a total cost of 13,500 dollars for that option. The other location is on the west side of the parking lot. And we would need to draw a, a sidewalk to connect some point of access for ADA up to either the side, the street or the parking lot up there. And that's about a 300-foot stretch of, of sidewalk. So there are a couple of different options. We could lay sidewalk and that'd be approximately $18,000. Or there are, um, mats essentially that you can buy that provide ADA, uh, ADA access. They're more temporary in nature and they are more cost-effective, uh, in nature. And so you have a, a broad range there from about 4,500 and, you know, those are just estimates at this point to.
How temporary are we talking? Like replacing them every year or every 10 years?
These are used at beaches and, and other parks to allow access. They, there are some less sturdy and there are some more sturdy and you get what you pay for in general in terms of the sturdiness. But no, they would last with that amount of use. They would last several years, these mats.
Mr. French, on your figures here, um, what do those budget figures include?
So we didn't have, uh, a great deal of time to look into some of this. And we did use unit costs for our recent Yosemite sidewalk project. We took those unit costs. That is about a four to five foot wide sidewalk, four, four inches deep. Let's call it no rebar. And that's what we took the unit price on to give the council a sense of how much the sidewalk could cost.
Does this include grading?
No.
Does this include form work?
Yes.
Okay. Did we check the existing grades from the existing path of travel to these areas? In particular, the Westerly location to confirm that the existing path of travel meets ADA?
There will be some grading needed.
I meant the existing pavement by the park. Does that meet ADA?
I'm pretty positive it does. Yeah, I'll verify it, but yes.
So those are some of the things that we, um, were directed or requested to look into. So the things to consider, of course, are, are costs associated with these two options. Um, we have also talked about security and access. You know, is there flood lighting? Is there like Oakdale lighting, lighting, um, that goes to 11:30 at night? So these are other things that should be, um, considered. Physical access to the park in terms of, um, the mat or sidewalk up against the street, away from the street. And is there a fence around the park? Um, these, again, these types of things. And then the master plan uses, we do have a master plan there. Is some vision of what this park could ultimately be, the expansion area? You know, does laying down a use now, um, how does that affect some of the other uses to be considered? So just want, uh, you know, council to understand all of the topics associated with the decision for the location. And then we can take questions after, but as you get further into the staff report, the deal points. And if you had to sum it up, it's really about cost responsibility, right? It's who provides some of the things needed or desired as part of the implementation of the bowl, which is what they said they could provide, you know, a bowl. So, um, the first one is city, if, if we were proposing deal points, we would want to, of course, the council would decide on location and extent of the park. This is a phase one of maybe three or four phases, two or three phases. So what do you do with the other land around the first phase? They have said they want to deliver a 100 by 100 foot skate park. This would be approximately 25 by 25, not exactly, but it would, it'd be about a quarter of the total park. And so there is some question about what is the rest of the area look like or is there a rest of the area? And so that's the note about, um, the location and extent of the overall skate park. And then number two and two A is really about responsibility. If there's fencing needed, if there's sidewalk needed, if there's security camera or lighting, who should be responsible for those costs? And then as you get into item three, the city has permit fees and, and other inspection fees. Who would be responsible for those costs? That's three and, and three A. Number four, the city would of course maintain, I believe, as a public facility, a public improvement. And, and it would be the responsibility of the city to maintain that into the future. And then a couple of other, um, deal points for council's consideration is really in, in terms of timing. If you look back at past MOU drafts, there's this notion of the city nor EPF doesn't want to get stuck with anything. And, and so we'd want to make sure that it was constructed in a timely manner. And if it wasn't constructed in, in that timely manner, there was some sort of, um, report back or, or conversation had with the city and the council about what was transpiring and, and how we could problem solve that. And then the last is really to reestablish the relationship between EPF and the city and to understand from EPF standpoint, what is their next move? Is it maintain as a nonprofit body? Is it to seek funds for phase two of the skate park? Is it to seek funds for something else? Some other recreational amenity or some other community amenity? I think it would be important for the council to reestablish kind of, um, ground rules or, or terms with EPF moving forward. So those are staff's sort of thoughts and recommendations in terms of the MOU deal points. And we will answer any questions that the council may have.
I think, uh, it seems logical, so we don't get stuck in a circular conversation, to go down, you know, one question at a time and address each, you know, bullet point, so to speak, as we go down the list. And then obviously get the input from the people who are, you know, excuse me, driving the bus with EPF. Would be my, my input on that. Um, you guys have any objection to that?
I, uh, I don't have an objection. I do have a question for staff.
Oh, go for it.
So just if we were to go with option one, A, and that 100, 100 right on the road, is there, have we started a discussion of what happens to that temporary parking? If we continue to expand it or if we move it? Or if there is or is not like, that, that's kind of the ingress egress to the other parking lot? Would that still, would that go around that parking? That's my first question. The second question is, we have that house there on that property that is currently being rented out. Would that continue? Would that impede with that process or would we, is, is that null and void? So those are my two questions about, about the, uh, location and putting that skate park.
So the width of the temporary parking lot right now is approximately 100 feet. It's a little north of 100 feet. And so there would be no real impact to the property, the residential property to the north. Based on a skate park moving in. And then I am buying myself time to remember your first question.
And then would there be an egress then around the other side to expand it so that you could get out on Main Street from the parking lot? You know what I mean? So that it's no, you, you don't have an exit there from the parking lot to McHenry. So would we then make kind of a pathway around the skate park?
So there definitely are some things that have not.
And is that us?
Yeah, there's definitely things that have not been fully, fully thought through and, and that's no. and that's no fault of anyone. We kind of, we have to sort of walk forward. When we get, if we get direction from the council, then EPF will go to design. These are the types of things in design that we can raise and address. Your first question was about, you know, the remainder of the area in the 100-by-100, and does that maintain, remain parking? I think that is a question to be determined as well. If it's parking and it's directly adjacent or up against a portion of skate park, there are some just safety concerns with cars and conflicts there. And so I think even more so, you'd want to think about fencing or some sort of barrier or separation of the use. And so again, those are the things, I think, once we get, you know, sort of direction on which way to move, we can iterate.
You have to have a location first, basically.
Okay. And then the second question was whether or not that house would still be, if we keep the house, if we continue renting it out, we have now a skate park right next door, and whether there was space. And it seems like there's space, but what's planned with that house once we're developing this piece of land?
City staff doesn't have any plans, and I think we don't feel that it would be burdened.
Okay.
I don't know. Substantially, I guess, they may feel differently, of course, but it wouldn't be burdened substantially. And so that would be a policy-level decision from the council's standpoint on if they wanted to continue that use or not.
Thank you.
What are the current dimensions of the overflow lot?
I don't know the width. It's about 100 by, I mean, we could eyeball it, 400, 500 feet.
So how many parking spaces would be losing?
Yeah, again, we would have to take a look and see, but you're going to lose approximately 20 to 25 parking stalls. I mean, unless we move it, I mean, we can take what we remove and add it to one end or to a side and not lose any, just have in a different area.
That's what it sounds like. Your first idea is with the grading, $6,000 plus $7,500 would take...
Yeah, because we can use the same material that we removed, put back right where we're going to be adding to.
Does that impact any future use of expansion of the fields?
Potentially. That's one of the decisions we're trying to make here tonight. But yes, potentially it could.
Mr. French, can you pull up a map?
Well, on the master plan, didn't we already account for that? So I don't know if it necessarily becomes like a major problem.
So if we just take that square and end it, right there. But then the skate park's there, and then you have to have a path out from the parking lot.
And I guess that's my concern. If we locate it along Escolon Belota to Mayor Protem's point, where now is the exit and entrance, or is the ingress egress into that temporary parking lot?
I'd have to shift up or down.
It would seem more logical to go back out to Escolon Belota between the house and the park.
So we would have to construct another road along the north side?
Yeah, I don't want to say a little bit of pavement, but yes, an access way for the cars.
And does this $7,500 include that redevelopment of a new road, access road?
No, no, it does not.
But right now, it's just part of the gravel parking lot, so it could just be more gravel that continues on, right? It doesn't need to be asphalt.
No, and I understand that, but you have to grade it, you have to compact it, you got to put down the gravel. I mean, it's a multi-step process. It's not just a matter of throwing down gravel and calling it a temporary road.
Yeah, I think there's going to be small hiccups along the way. Just any project's going to have that. But unless I'm missing something, I think the citizens are wanting this project. And if that's the case, then I think we need to pin down a game plan tonight and actually move forward.
Well, then I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and my question is, where's the money coming from?
Well, my understanding is EPF is bringing the, you know, large amount of it.
No, I understand they have the $125,000 for the skate park, but I'm talking about the improvements for...
Correct, I was just about to answer that.
Okay.
But then the rest of that would have to be something that we're looking at. For example, Measure P funds, that's an option. You have money, monies in the recreation potentially that are coming in. And when we talk about, you know, major massive park, we're talking about, you know, relatively speaking, pennies versus dollars, you know what I'm saying? We're talking about millions of dollars, you know, I don't know, four, three to five grand making a road, in my opinion, is pretty small, you know, amount of that hole, you know what I'm saying? I mean, nothing's going to be perfect, but if, I mean, if the citizens are wanting this, which it sounds like to me, then that means they're willing to, you know, potentially want us to problem solve the financial part, is I guess what I'm getting at.
I guess my point is that we, and when Selinda put together this year's budget, none of this was budgeted for. And it sounds to me like any improvements to this would need to be considered as a future CIP project, which would then roll into next fiscal year. Because right now, we don't, we don't have this money planned for.
If I may answer, it could be easily rolled into our mid-year budget adjustments if the council desires it to be. We have a couple of different funding sources. There's the DIF funds for the recreation, it's on one of our listings here tonight. It's about 169. We've got some Reagan funds that were graciously donated for recreation use for the youth. If this project qualifies, you know, that would be, and there's the Measure P funds too, so. And I know we're still in our beginning phases with the Measure P, finding out exactly how much we're going to be getting. I anticipate a surplus at the end of the year from our budget, but I can't bank on that. I have to see what's going on. So I can't guarantee you how much we'll get for Measure P, but I would assume there's enough for these small amounts that we're discussing.
To the city manager, was this discussed at all with the Measure P committee about using Measure P funds towards this project?
No, this has not been discussed with the Measure P. We've had one meeting with them, sort of an onboarding meeting. We haven't got into depth on any one project.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask EPF a couple of questions when we get to that point, please.
Would you mind coming up?
Phil Gero. I'm just curious. I'm sure you've looked this over and you've seen some of the MOU deal points, and while we're talking about finance, it is, there's some implication that costs would be passed on to you for things like cameras and lighting, which I'm assuming would take the project out of the accumulated budget of $125,000. So do you have any input that you'd like to share with us on those MOU deal points or where the project stands financially if these requirements were added?
Sure, thank you for the question. So, you know, any additional cost is going to require us to get a donor, raise more funding. It's not to say that we won't be able to, once the site is finalized and we can move forward with the final engineering and move the project forward, to answer a few more of the details. It doesn't mean that we won't recognize savings once we go to construction. We don't know what the final cost of concrete is going to be. Is P and L going to work with us as another concrete vendor going to work with us? Rebar? We have individuals around the community that have skid steers and can, you know, provide heavy equipment, fencing, things like that. So it's all very, you know, it's based on a maximum of $125,000 is what we have in the bank. And that's what we gave to Dreamland and said, this is what our budget is, what can we do with it? So it will be challenging if an $18,000 sidewalk is added to our budget. If it's $4,500 in ADA-compliant matting, we can probably work to find that money or to work with other nonprofits, to work with other donors to try and get that. So, you know, we want to deliver the project, but we do have to be mindful of the costs that are on EPF. So when you are looking at either up against Escolon Belota Road or you're looking to the west of the parking, we're, right now, we're only talking about a 25-by-25 yard square. So if we focus on delivering that bowl, we're only impacting the parking lot 25 by 25, not 100 by 100. The other 75 by 75 can remain parking until it's time to build phase two or phase three or the rest of the park. And I have no idea when that will happen, but, you know, if you look at the history, it's going to be a while. So that parking will remain. The ingress from Escolon Belota Road will remain at least 75 feet, or give or take, right? Because 25 of it will be eaten up with the park, with the bowl area. The other 75 will still allow ingress and parking and egress. So we're looking at it as, we're looking for a pretty narrow lens. Yes, we'd like you to earmark 100 by 100. Let us build a 25 by 25 right now. Minimize whatever costs get passed on to us. It sounds like you don't want the skate park to be open after dark. That should eliminate, you know, any additional lighting right now. Cameras, sounds like they are available out there and they can be added on. If we have to add fencing to separate parking from the actual bowl area, we can look at what those costs might be and see what we can do to try and get donors for that. But that, based on my conversations with Jalen, those are all things that we kind of want to finalize, depending upon where you want us to build. If it's in the, up against Escolon Belota Road, little impact on the parking for now. If it's to the west of the parking, no, no impact to that. But then the cost ends up in that ADA-compliant sidewalk or matting. If it's matting, we can probably work with you on that. If it's, if we're required to put the sidewalk in right now with this construction, that's going to be a challenge. So my request on behalf of EPF would be minimize whatever permanent, long-term fixtures may be needed, and let's work within our budget and small amounts with the city so that we can actually deliver the project, meet the ADA guidelines, and then get at least the bowl into the ground.
That kind of answers at least one of my additional questions, which was, do you have a preference in location? So that kind of answers that. One final question for me, I'm sure there's others up here. Assuming that this body can make a decision on where that goes, what is the intent of EPF for future development of that skate park? Is that still up for discussion? Is there definitive plan to move forward? Where do you guys stand?
Sure. So we haven't had that conversation with the existing board, but EPF was created to be its own entity, and we've had personnel changes, we've had board members change over the years and all. So that entity will continue on. The issue that we have right now is that we specifically raised those funds to build a skate park, and we are committed to delivering that bowl feature. Moving forward, that can be, and I think that's the intent of the conversation between the council and EPF, is what do you want us to continue down the road on? Do you want us to add up, you know, additional features to the skate park? Do you want us to look at pickleball courts? Do you want us to look at other features, other, you know, recreation needs in the city? And I think that's all up for conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to quickly clarify, you were saying the bowl is 25 by 25. We're meaning 50 by 50 at 25% of the 100 by 100, is that correct? Or is it...
It's about a quarter of it.
So it'd be more like 50 by 50? Is that right?
It would be...
Is that a quarter of the, instead of 100?
Yeah, it's about 1,800 square feet out of 10,000. So it'll be, it'll be about 25, 20, it'll be pretty square. It'll be about 25 feet by 25 feet.
25% of it, not 50.
Yeah, maybe a little bit smaller than that.
Okay.
So, and then, and to your question about the beginner to intermediate versus intermediate to advanced, we did talk with Dreamland about that, and they said absolutely that it can be built in a way that it would allow for beginners to all experience levels to use the park, primarily by adding decking around the bowl. So we did ask them to work up a cost for any, to go from a two-foot to a four-foot or a five-foot decking around that. So we want to be able to put the bowl in, we want to be able to spend the money that we've raised. Anything additional to that, if we know what we need to raise, we'll do our best to try and deliver that. So extra concrete.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions up here before we bring it back, or? No?
So I have, I have something, Mr. Mayor, and I know that to Mr. Legero and members of the EPF and some community members, feels like I'm against this project. I'm not against this project, but I do master planning for a living. That's my job. And when you do master planning, you develop a budget, and then you design to the budget. Right now, it doesn't matter if we're talking about location or we're talking about MOU deal points. There are still plenty of questions that I have as a council member and as a resident. So when you do master planning, you have your budget, and then you start inserting line items to that budget. And what's before us tonight is to make a decision on location, but I don't believe that we have the actual, all the information that we need in order to make a decision. And what I mean by that is, and it's at no fault of yours, Mr. Legero, no fault of staffs, but typically what I'm used to seeing is taking $125,000 and start putting in line items and say, okay, fence would be, what we said, option A, $13,500. The bowl would be 50 grand, rebar is 20 grand. And we have those donations and those donation amounts locked in so that you know firmly and you can commit to the council that, yes, we have a donation of the concrete. We don't have to spend money on concrete, we're going to spend that money on lighting. Or we don't need to spend money for rebar, we're getting that, so we can put that money towards fencing. Right now, what's before the council, in my opinion, there are too many what-ifs for us to be able to make a decision, to be able to move forward. Candidly, when this item showed up on the agenda, I don't know why this item showed up on the agenda, because there are still so many questions that need to be answered. And I mentioned this last time, and audience members got upset, but what's the rush? Why can't we do this the right way and work together with the council, with EPF? Get those donations locked in and then make a commitment. Council can make a commitment to EPF, EPF can make a commitment to council, and we're working together to make a commitment for the residents.
I appreciate the position. We do have the line items with Dreamland, and that's how we developed our $125,000 budget. So we have those. We are updating those right now based on conversations with the city and conversations with Dreamland. So we do have those costs. I should have those updated here, hopefully within the next week. We've been talking with Dreamland about updating those to make sure. They've been looped in on what the two issues are really with the city... They've been looped in on what the two issues are really with the city, the location and the ADA compliant sidewalk. I think the, the difficulty is that there are things that are within our control, but there are clearly things that are within the city's control, location, and what other requirements the city is going to have that EPF will be responsible for. And that's what brought us to trying to develop the MOU so that we can have that clarity in what the additional line items may be that EPF is going to have to, to figure out a budget for. Other issue is that, I'm sorry. The other issue is that when we have talked to people about donating, they want to see action, not conversation, or hey, this is the year, this is the year. So by engaging in the MOU conversation to trying to, to define where it's going to be and all that, and they know that we have a, a break ground date, that is when we hope that there will be additional people that will come and say, hey, you know, when I talked to you, you know, five years ago about, you know, adding features or putting my name on a feature, I'm ready to do that now that you guys are actually going to develop something.
And I understand that, but, I mean, right now, we have no budget line items for lighting. We have, and true, we, I mean, we could put a limitation on lighting or hours of operation, but yet the hours of operation, you're still, might need some sort of lighting out there to prevent kids from being there after hours. We have no budget, we have no amount, what security cameras are going to cost, we have no idea what fencing is going to cost, and there's just so many what-ifs.
I think those are the variables.
That's the point of the meeting, right?
Yeah, those are the variables.
Okay, so show me the budget then. Show me the budget.
You don't have to have a grumpy attitude.
I'm not, I don't have a grumpy attitude, but you guys are.
Bring it from a 10 to a 2. Let's have a conversation.
Okay, so show me the budget.
So what I'm telling you is, in order for them, this is what I'm hearing, and I don't know if you're hearing the same thing, in order for them to move forward with these discussions you're talking about, they need to have a hard and fast location to base this around. So until they have a location, they can't give us a definitive answer on the ADA or this or that because, one, that, some of that is predicated on, on, on what our decisions are, and two, the location. So if we were to give them a location tonight with the idea of, you know, fleshing out the rest of it with the city and then bringing it back to us, I don't see where there's an issue. I just don't.
The issue that I have.
Is the financial part.
There is no budget.
They're, they're going to create a budget once we know where the location is.
And I am telling you as I sit here, that's not how master planning is done.
Well, there looks like a plan right here where there's a skate park.
But you develop, you have your budget.
That's the master plan right there.
I'm talking about developing a project budget. When you have a project budget, you have.
I get what you're saying, but in order for them to do a project budget, they didn't buy this land.
Correct.
So they don't have, they need to know where on this place is it going to be, so then they can create that master planned budget you're talking about in conjunction with the city.
Do you have a copy of, of, a printout of any kind from, from Dreamland that you could provide us showing the, the line items in it?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll provide that to you, and hopefully we'll have an updated one, hopefully this week, and I'll give you an updated one.
Perfect. That being said, I've got a couple of questions, and this is kind of for staff and council at the same time. As we were talking about extending the sidewalk on Escalon Balota, we were talking about 100 feet of sidewalk. But if we're only needing to go 25 feet, we could actually cut that $6,000 cost into a fraction and just run a sidewalk up as far as the end of the skate park, correct? Now we're talking about a couple thousand dollars. Parking spaces that you would lose in that instance would be four to six, I think, if my math is correct there, maybe eight?
Yeah, there's no.
25 by 25?
No more than, with a 25 by 25, look at the map, 10 at the very most.
10 at the absolute most.
Looks like it would be, yes.
So even if we, let's say we don't extend the parking lot, so we can save those dollars for, for right now. Now we're talking about $2,000 to extend a sidewalk, you can plant it in that corner and get going on this thing. That's, that seems to be the best solution. At that point, you've got a location, we've identified something. I, I think that that's much more cost effective. I appreciate Councilman Ingles', you know, input about putting it over at the other end and extending the, you know, the sidewalk. In my opinion, temporary mats, I think, are a waste of money. I don't like to do anything temporary. At some point, it's going to go in the garbage, and I think that that's a, a waste of, of tax dollars. If we can do something permanent, that's much better. So my, my proposal, my suggestion to council, and you guys can kick it around, would be let's just extend the sidewalk up, you know, 25, maybe 30 feet, you know, beyond where it currently ends at Escalon Feed and Supply. Allow them to have that southeast corner to put their three-leaf clover in. I think it'll look real nice right in that corner as well. And that would get this moving forward without having to do much in the way of diving into the parking lot and losing too much parking. Then should we decide that we, you know, soccer Saturday comes along and we have people, you know, parking on the highway or something, then, you know, we can address it at that point if we end up needing to. At that point, I, you know, I don't think that there's that much of a financial burden on, on the city, you know, aside from putting a sidewalk in. And of course, there's a discussion of fencing and lighting and cameras and all of that kind of stuff. That's all going to have to be put in. At some point, it's going to have to be put in by someone, somewhere. We allow them to go ahead and build a skate park with no, you know, security to stop people from being in there all night long, that's going to be nothing but a problem. So whether that's EPF that installs those, or the city of Escalon pays for it, I still don't think that we're looking at such a, a huge financial burden that it's worth continuing to kick the can down the road on a project that the city's been waiting on for over 20 years. I, I think that it's, it's time to make some progress on it and make a decision. So I don't know.
Well, I, I think that what you're saying, it makes sense, but at the same time, a lot of those questions are going to be answered and then brought back to council once you're able to, they're able to sit down with the city and actually flesh out that.
Iron out all of those details.
You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
They, they need, they need a specific location. If we're going to say, hey, this is the location, so now they can move forward with their assessment and their plan to then be able to do what Councilman Strowman's wanting to, to do, then I see it moves forward just fine.
But, Mr. Mayor, that's not what's in front of us. That's why I'm frustrated, because what, what's in front of us right now?
These are suggestions from, from the city.
Right. And I'm trying to explain to you, what's in front of us right now is, the first one is to select an option. That's, that's pretty easy, black or white, A or B, right?
Yeah.
But if you go down through the, the rest of the deal points, what's before us is to ask, to basically, to, to make a decision as to whose responsibility it is to do the rest of these improvements. We can't make that decision tonight.
You're at the, you're, you're putting, you're putting the cart before the horse.
No, look, right here.
What's question one?
Okay, the city count, like I said, item number one, we can resolve. Item number two, we can't.
Then question one goes to question two.
We can't resolve item, question number two tonight?
Then we don't resolve question number two tonight.
Okay.
You go down the list, this is why I was wanting to make sure we went through this in organized fashion, so we weren't in a circular conversation.
Okay.
So like, the very first thing is we got to figure out location, so then the rest of these questions could be answered as follows. You understand what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, I understand.
So from staff's standpoint and why this came forward, I do think we should give all ourselves a little grace. This is an unorthodox process. This isn't a, you know, city-funded infrastructure project that, that needs to happen right now. This is community members coming together, raising a significant amount of money and trying to, to move an item forward. And so there is a little bit of, you know, I, I kind of call it walking forward, that, that needs to happen here. And, and it is uncomfortable because we don't have all the answers. And, and I think what staff is, is asking is, do we, are we aiming at the same North Star? And if we're aiming at the same North Star, then over time, we can get to all the answers that, that everyone wants. But if we don't have the conversations, then we can't get to where we need to be, whether that is for the skate park or against the skate park ultimately. And so I, on behalf of staff, apologize for putting sort of this unformed thing in front of you, but it is because of the nature of the beast that, that it is here.
Well, these are the questions you see that are obvious things that need to be addressed. I get it. So what we have to go through is say, okay, what things can we address immediately in this room? What things do we need to address maybe as they're researched a little bit more thoroughly? But you're, we, it isn't an all or nothing thing, I guess is what I'm getting at. This is something where you're saying, okay, well, the community wants a skate park, it seems pretty obvious. Would they need a location? Well, let's give them a location. The rest of the stuff then can be worked out through conversation, bring it back to the council, and you move forward. I guess is what I'm getting at. So I think if we just take one question at a time and answer it, and if we don't have an answer, we move to the next question until we, and then we figure out which questions need to be, you know, dissected deeper, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Okay, so, I have a question for Councilmember Kay. So if, if you go with option A, and someone is at the park, I, Mr. Haskin raised last time, how will somebody in the park be able to look over and see their children at the skate park while they're attending a soccer game, or?
I really don't think that's going to be a long-term option either way. You're going to end up having trees and barriers, backstops, buildings, light posts, people. I mean, at, at the end of the day, you're, you're not going to be able to continue to stand in the center of Hobbit and Innes Park and see every corner of it. It's just not going to be possible. As, as it is, if you're on either one of the baseball fields, the, the restrooms are in the way of seeing the play structures. So, you know, that's just kind of a, a fact of life, so.
So visually, we, no matter which location?
I, I don't, I don't think that it's going to make any difference, no. Because I think that you're going to end up having, over time, you're going to have trees and stands and, you know, backstops, dugouts, you know, all of that is going to, you know, end up along that, that back fence. So you're still going to have a barrier there anyway. And I really don't see, you know, why we would just put this, you know, structure kind of out in the middle of no man's land right now with what we would have to do to make it usable and ADA compliant, when it seems like the cheaper, you know, faster alternative would be to just go right there in the, the southeast corner of where it was designed to be in the first place. And it's right off of the sidewalk, you can, as long as the chief's not standing there, you can ride your skateboard right, right up the, the sidewalk and go straight into the park from Escalon Balota.
Okay.
So that's my suggestion for this thing, to, to try and move it forward, not for myself or for council, but for the city and for our kids.
Well, I think tonight, if we were able to give you a location, is that the biggest issue moving forward? Is hammering down a location so that you can get the rest of these questions answered?
I think that's the immediate question. Where are we going to go? And then that helps define what questions have to be asked and answered.
Yeah.
So, and it helps us because if it's up by Escalon Balota Road, then we have, we know that that ADA compliant sidewalk is going to be not $18,000, so.
Well, if fair to say you were able to get a location hypothetically tonight, you were able to sit with the city, go through these questions, answer them, and then bring them back to council, that would be, you know, I think seems like the logical direction, unless, you know, there's an ob, you know, I, I know Mr. Strom, or Councilman Strom doesn't feel the same way, but if the rest of the council does, and then obviously, I think there are some questions in the audience, too.
Mr. Mayor, it's not that I'm against this.
I'm not saying you are.
I just want to make, I want to make sure that, that, yes, I want to make sure that we've thought about this, not only to protect the city, but to, honestly, to protect EPF. So actually, I did have a question for you, Mr. Logero. If we took the sidewalk out of the equation, took finances out of the equation, does EPF have a preferred location?
Not particularly of those two, not really. To be most consistent with that master plan, up by Escalon Balota Road. There's pros and cons to both locations, but from a cost standpoint, the master plan, probably law enforcement, you know, ability to, to patrol it up by Escalon Balota Road probably would get the lean over the, the west side.
Hold on one second. Did you have a question, or you wanted to add something back there? Kurt?
Can you just formally open public comment?
Okay, I'll open public comment, sorry.
Sorry about that. I agree with you, Mayor Hagan, that really the only issue here tonight is where you guys want to consider putting a skate park. I'd just like to bring up, this issue's been around for a long time, and the, the very last issue that this previous city council six years ago dealt with was removing the siding because they didn't have a signed MOU with the EPF. They couldn't get them to sign, they wouldn't, they wouldn't even respond to city staff to discuss it. And so in December 3rd, 2019, council voted for it, oh, to say, forget it, we're not even going to cite it. So if you'd worked this backwards, I think you should cite it, give them an opportunity to, you know, have something to shoot at. And then I would say to you, there's been many people come here and talk about a skate park. It's never been a favorite issue with anybody other than EPF and a few others. It got shot down by council because of that. There's a separation here. The whole point of EPF was to design this thing, fund it, and develop it, or give the city a finished product. The city made it very clear through MOUs and previous that they had no interest at all in putting any money into a skate park. That's the whole point for the EPF. And the city had no appetite for phasing, because phasing means you're going to be ultimately responsible. When you co-mingle city money with a nonprofit, all of a sudden, it's a city project. It's not an EPF project anymore. The city has to take it over, it's prevailing wage, you have to, we have to be responsible for it. Bear that in mind. This is a separation of nonprofit and city. And that's the way, that's why the city turned, turned against it six years ago. This is coming up now because you removed the fireworks booth from their profit structure for next year. And I don't mean to be mean, but I would ask everybody in this building, how many people have contributed in cash, not in kind services, $1,000 or more to this project? Raise your hand. One person. That, that tells you that there's, you know, there's a, there's a vested interest here, but it's not a citywide interest. And I, and I really don't think, if the city wants to do this project, it goes in as, as Sean Strowman said, it's a CIP project. You let people come in here and debate you, then you're going to see how much interest there is in it. Understand? Don't, don't have, ask, excuse me, but, because if you just say, I'm going to put a bowl on the ground, and the city, you know, hits hard times again, and we have no money, then you, then you're stuck with a bowl on the ground. And there is no proof, other than what Mr. Logero's saying, that anybody's going to throw any more money into it. They haven't been able to do it in 15 years. 15 years. The only money they have raised is with the fireworks booth and a little bit from a wine stand. I don't want to get too far into it because you wanted to cut it off at that, and, and I would just say one thing about the EPF. What happens if this doesn't go through with that money? Where does that money end up? Can that money be returned to the Recreation Fund? Because it was, all, all of the incorporation bylaws, everything that these guys have has been given to them by the city, basically. So does that money come back to us, or does it have to go to another nonprofit? I think you need to look into that. And then I would really caution you against using any recreation funds for this, this project if the city takes it over. You, you need a CIP project. If you take the money out of the Recreation Fund, and this came up before in 2019, they were going to deplete the entire recreation. were gonna deplete the entire recreation fund to put into the skate park to get this thing over the hump. But where's the money gonna come for the uniforms? And the, and the referees? It's gonna all come from the general fund. So you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul here and circulating around. Keep this separate. If, if this, get the money back, and make it a CIP project, you know? I, I'm not for or against it, but at least people have a, a say in it. Nobody's coming here tonight to argue this thing, because, quite frankly, it's, it's not ready to go. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have a whole lot of points. Hi, good night. Pass my bedtime. Okay, uh, first of all, I, I wanna hit it from a, a non-monetary place. I wanna hit it to you from a grandma and from a mom. Um, I had five children, and I had two very close encounters with, uh, child kidnapping. I understand being on Escalon Balota is nice, because the police can drive by, but so can a kidnapper. And I think, um, from the standpoint of it being part of a park, being on Escalon Balota, it's cut off, it's not part, it really isn't. Um, so if you look at it, please not monetarily, um, it fits into the park on the west. Not only that, but I think safety for children, um, they're not surrounded by street and parking lot fence, no fence, I really don't care. Um, uh, and it's not easy for someone just to pull up, nab someone, some young kid while a mom's busy with getting four others out of the car, and off they go. It's too easy. Uh, being back on the west is a little more inconvenient for our officers, yes, I get that, but from my point of view as a mom, the safety is far better back there, and it's part of the park, and it, it goes with the park. And I don't really care if it's 100 by 100, and if 25 by 25 is the only thing they ever get there, at least by golly, we got it. Um, I understand what you're saying, but we're citizens, okay? And it's a committee, and it's people from our committee, and, um, they look kind of intelligent to me. And, um, I think as far as committee goes, they're not gonna do it the way the government wants to do it, and I don't really care that it doesn't check off all the boxes for government. And going any slower, dad, gum it, how many years has it been? Let's get the government involved, and let's slow it down. I'm sorry, get it done. And I am of the opinion, as a citizen and a dumb grandma at that, that yeah, if you give them the go-ahead, and you pick a safe spot, and you tell them to move, some of us are gonna step up and pay for some of that extra stuff, because we're actually seeing something get done. So please don't slow it down, please don't stop it, don't give me your governmental or political concerns, I don't care. And so what, 10 kids use it and not 50 kids? That's 10 kids that are gonna use it. And maybe their siblings will come and use the park. Or maybe more kids will come to their family, because they don't play football, or they don't play baseball, or they don't play soccer, but they're gonna go on the skateboard. Let's get it done, please. And please consider using the west. Let's see, was there any other point I wanted to make? I think that pretty much covers it. Okay. Move forward, think safety, not dollars in pockets. I don't care if your boxes are checked off, it's community. If you let the community do things, I mean, what do we do on April, every April of Escalon? There's no government involved, and we get things done. It'll get done. Trust your citizens. It'll get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
To begin with, I'm not part of the EPA.
Okay.
But, uh, having been at the very beginning of this journey we took some 20 years ago, not even 20 years ago, 12 years is all it's been going, and the city council didn't, was not against the skate park, contrary to other statements. It was in favor of it, but we were in hard times, the issue was money. We had some people that said, we will raise the money, give us a separate, uh, EPA, separate little, uh, non-governmental thing, that took us off the hook for money. Now, 12 years later, these people have raised that money, they're coming back to give back to it, and it's time to get it done, like Sherry said. Best way to kill, uh, uh, a project, I'm in favor of it, but let's have another committee meeting. Oh, let's wait till next meeting. Kill it through having meetings and meetings and talking it to death. So you can say you're for it, but if you're killing it by putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, you're not for it. And like Sherry said, it's time to get it done, the money's there, the details, uh, no matter where you put it, you gotta have a location before you can get the details. So please, let it go forward, let them work out the details, and bring it back to you with the details, give them a location. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me, anyone else? Here we'll, uh, go to online, and we'll bring it back. Okay? Excuse me. You know, you know, I would propose that we give a location and allow the EPF to have conversation with the, the, um, city and kind of get these question marks fleshed out, so that then, prior to breaking ground, we have, um, all these question marks answered. And I think that would be the most logical approach in my mind.
I agree. So are you suggesting that we vote on a location tonight, and then go through the deal points, or table the deal point discussion until we get additional information?
I'm suggesting that we go ahead and give them a location tonight, we allow them to then sit down with the city and figure out these deal points, and then bring it back to us, so that we're not stuck in an endless cycle till midnight, talking about something that, uh, we could talk for multiple days about. Um, so, you're gonna have questions, I'm sure everyone else is gonna have questions, but the big picture in my mind is you gotta have a location, and then once you have a location, you can give fixed costs, uh, hard costs to, to that location. Um, I guess is what I'm getting at. And that allows the EPF then to sit down with our, uh, city manager, and, you know, address these question marks, so that we have more clarity, and at the same time as things moving forward. That's how I see it.
So, just one item to note, um, to what Ms., Mr. Haskin just mentioned, keep in mind, and I think most of the council is aware of this already, but the figures that are quoted in front of us, those are prevailing wage. If EPF were to do this, uh, on a sidewalk, and you could incorporate the sidewalk, that would not be prevailing wage.
Any, any other thoughts up here? I know I'm not technically supposed to make a motion.
No, yeah, just put it, I mean.
Just so you know, Mr. Mayor, you, you do have the ability to make a motion.
Well, then, I'll make.
You're elected official.
No, just that, um, we give them a location, and we're wanting them, EPF and staff, to hash out the MOU deal points. I kind of feel like we should be giving staff direction on those deal points.
Okay, gotcha.
A little bit, you know, like going through it a bit before they sit down and hash it out, whether that's up here, I mean, that's.
I was thinking, maybe I'm not thinking through it right, but I was thinking that we would, um, give them a location, the questions that we have here, sit down with staff and actually address those, and then bring them back, so that we're, it's a lot, it's a lot more narrow of a conversation, is what I'm thinking.
I have no problem moving this to talk about the MOU deal points, uh, you know, in the future, uh, but I think part of this conversation is how far are we trying to push this out? Um, and, I mean, in two weeks, are we bringing it back for the, for the deal points?
Gotcha.
Two, three weeks, or next month? You know what I mean? And so.
What seems like a realistic timeline? President, uh, of EPF? Mr. Leggero, uh, what kind of timeline would you be thinking is realistic to that?
It's really up to Jalen's schedule, but I think we could be back at the next council meeting, because I think that if we have a site, I think the issues are pretty, pretty simple, you know? And then.
I think some of it may be also Dreamland, and, and some of the thought that they put into, if we come up with a specific location, you know, some of the ancillary issues around that. So there, you know, I don't think anyone should commit to two weeks, you know, two meetings from now, but.
Well, not too far.
Yeah, yeah. If it's direction of the council, um, we can work quickly on getting some of these things dialed in, based on the input that we've received so far, or any future input that we get during this discussion.
Okay. Um, does that sound good to you? Logical?
Yeah, um, either way, it's just, uh, we can either talk about the MOU deal points tonight and make this a longer meeting, or we can have them.
Well, I think they need to be.
Tonight, or them talk about it privately, and it just be brought out another two weeks before we discuss it. So we either discuss it now, or we discuss it later, so.
I think it's more rational to do it later, because we need to, that way we can get, um, more definitive answers or numbers, so that it'll satisfy, uh, Councilman Stroman's questions at the same time. So, one other, one question I did have, though, for Chief, was, in that Oakdale conversation, were you, or any of these places, mind you, have you had any child abduction issues? Has that been brought up ever?
I didn't specifically ask, but nothing was mentioned as far as that goes.
Okay. All right, so that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to propose the location of the Escalon Skate Park on the west side of, uh, of the proposed location. So, a, as we look at the master plan, not at location 14, but adjacent to, it looks like location 21 or 24, I'm sorry, 21.
21 there.
So we're the, we're the, wait, can you bring it down? Just one, there you go.
Number 20's the park shop, so 21 would be.
It might go into that left field, if that field was gonna be there, but.
Um, any other seconds or other motion?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, you'll say aye.
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 Okay. And, uh, we have three ayes, all, um, opposed, say nay, and abstain.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be.
Just as a point of order, if you're gonna abstain, you really need to abstain from the whole item, and not just the vote at the end.
Okay.
Just, it's fine, we, it passed.
That's okay. Although, nay.
I'm not against the project, I guess.
I have no problem.
It's just, you, abstention really is you're abstaining from the item to a conflict. Outside of a conflict, you really should, you should really vote one way or the other.
Well, I'll say nay, then, to the location.
Okay.
Same, nay.
Okay.
And I say that because, uh, Oakdells is very, um, it's, it's not, it's probably the cleanest of all of them, and they seem to have very little problem, and it's right next to the road, and we haven't had any issues with children. Um, all right, let's move on to the next one.
So, hold on a second. Uh, Councilmember Engel, did your motion include, um, for staff to go away with EPF and talk about the deal points, and bring it, that back to council, because there's still another point of the agenda that has to be resolved?
Yeah. Um, can we pull that back up for a moment? My, um, tablet died, so I can't see that page any longer. Uh, the original motion did not, though.
If someone wants to make a motion for that piece, we can do that.
I'll milk, make a motion to table the MOU deal points until, um, staff and/or EPF can come back with, um, better budget numbers, um, moving forward.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And I would just say that the deal points can come back in a form that we think is acceptable. In other words, we can come back with deal points, or we can come back with a draft MOU. Either way, it facilitates discussion, I just wanna be clear. I would rather come back with a draft MOU that has all the terms and conditions, and not just a few deal points, because then what's gonna happen is, we're gonna come back with the draft MOU, and someone's gonna say, well, I didn't know about term 27.
And that was, I guess, I didn't say it specifically, but my motion includes a draft MOU with actual dollar figures included, um, so that it can be determined who does what.
Do you feel good with, basically, what Frank's saying?
Yes.
Okay. And you're good with seconding, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. All right.
So.
Okay, so at least we have a location, guys.
Yes.
We'll keep moving forward. Um, all right, on to the next step here. Um, number seven.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll just read the subject, as it is a long one. Um, the item before you is to consider a termination and settlement agreement outlining, Escalon Unified School District's purchase of city's interests in the pool facilities per the 2000 swimming pool facilities agreement between the city and the Escalon Unified School District, and authorizing, if approved, the city manager to execute the agreement. So, the item, again, before you, is a termination and settlement agreement, um, dating back to 2000, after the pool was, um, the original high school pool was lost 1998, 99, around there, for two reasons. One, it was, uh, over 50-year-old pool at that point, and there was some relocation of, kind of reorganization of 120, that infringed on it just enough to, to make it obsolete. So, a couple of years later, the city and the school district partnered to build a new pool in its current location. So that was around May 2000, that, uh, the city and the school district executed that agreement. It included the features we know now, the large pool, the waiting pool, the restroom, and, and a pump house. There's a little bit of nuance in some of this, but in general, the city had a responsibility of 39.84%, and the school district had a responsibility of 60.16%. That number will come up a little bit later. Back then, we're all envious, is about a $750,000 facility, an improvement of which the city's share was $290,000. There was a little bit of donation and, and grant, but not much. It was mostly funded by the school district and the city. The agreement speaks to use and maintenance. In general, during the school year, the school had use of it, and was responsible for the maintenance. During the summer, and I'm, I'm broadening it a little bit, um, during the summer, the city had access to it, and was responsible for the maintenance. And this worked well for many years, um, and then it stopped working well. It is a 30-year agreement, and it says in the agreement that, at the end of that term, or should the agreement be ex, um, terminated, that this, uh, the school district must buy out the city's interest in that pool, so that 39.84%. In essence, we, many of us know what happened, but the pool became in a state of disrepair. And the disrepair became such that it was financially unfeasible, really, to repair it. Further, the school district has indicated that since it is not of standard length, that they can't use it for competitions, and the physical education system has de-emphasized sort of pool use. And they view it as a liability now, and so therefore, they do not see the benefit or, or the need for the pool. And over time, it's become in, in more and more disrepair, to the point where, um, it just, the contract was terminated. And so per the contract, the agreement, the district must buy out the city's interest. And so the city led, in partnership with the school district, to receive, uh, a use, what is it called, a, um, a value in use appraisal. That's the type of appraisal needed for something that, um, doesn't necessarily hold any value, because it's not being used, is what it should be, a, a pool. And so the value on the appraisal was $1.1 million. The city's share, the 39.84% of the $1.1 million, is $442,000. So over time, through what we call the two plus two, which is two district. time, through what we call the two plus two, which is two district board members and two city council members along with staff, we discussed and negotiated the terms of this buyout of the city's interest. And those deal points are in the staff report, and I will just speak to them now. The district will pay the city $300,000. The city and district will share the cost of the demolition of the pool facility. It is their intent to demolish the pool. We have rough numbers, not finalized numbers, but it appears that the city's share of the demolition cost will be about $75,000. So the net would be about $225,000. And then the district also provides the city three years' use, up to 40 days per year, or no less than 35 days per year for its recreational programs, games, and practices. This includes grass fields and asphalt areas for basketball courts in the use agreement. So those are the three relatively straightforward and simple deal points as part of this buyout. And there are documents for your perusal, the council's perusal. We do have a draft of the termination and settlement agreement. We do have the original 2000, year 2000 agreement, as well as the appraisal, again, for full transparency into this item. So with that, be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
I wanted to make one statement to the community, so they're aware. Going through this process, you know, with Councilman Strowman as well as Pro Tem, it became very obvious that this isn't a salvageable swimming pool scenario, as much as we would like it to be. So unfortunately, we have to make a difficult decision to start over and move forward and get a swimming pool in a different direction or a different way that's on public land. So the first step to doing that is dissolving the existing, you know, contract that's there, and then having to move forward. Unfortunately, our swimming pool is, is in such a state of disrepair that financially, I don't even know if I can speak to that or not, but it's, it's nowhere close to reality, unfortunately, to be able to do that. So that being said, did you guys want to talk about anything up here?
I do have a question. Can we go back to the agenda item, please? I'm sorry, down to the, I think it's 72. Yeah. Under the discussion, district provides the city three years of El Portel Fields, up to 40 days per year. That portion, the last sentence, there's, or portion of the sentence says, for the purposes of its recreation program, game, and practice needs. So does that mean not open to the public? So if the public wanted to go in there and play basketball or utilize the fields in any way, that's off limits?
Not strictly off limits. It was sort of geared towards the program, the recreation program, games and practices. But in that time, when it's open, when someone may be having a game or a practice, the public can certainly access it as well.
Can I speak to that for a second?
Yeah.
In the, in the meetings we had, basically, they were, you know, nervous or concerned about, you know, people coming on to property as far as liability and stuff. Their feeling was that they would like to pilot this, to make sure that it's not going to be an issue. That's why we started with the three-year thing. And then if everything went well and the community was, you know, using this as a privilege and taking care of the property and not, you know, going crazy, in other words, they're respecting their property, they were very open to the dialogue of opening up more, more use for the community.
Well, you know, as far, as far as contracts are concerned, I'd like to see that in writing because ultimately, we're trading $142,000 in value for 120 days. So somebody with quick math, over $1,000 a day for, for usage, right? Like $1,200, something like that, quick math, a day for usage of those fields. I've expressed this opinion before, and I know it's, it's not really on the table, but I think it'd be a great opportunity for the citizens to use the, the high school's field for its track, for people to be able to run bleachers during offseason. You know, I know that's been off the table, but I do understand that there are some travel ball teams that practice at that field, and I'm wondering how come they get a privilege and we do not?
Hey, I think they're either paying for it or they're sneaking in, why not to?
Well, ultimately, we're paying for it at the cost of $1,000 plus per day. I mean, that's, that's really my input. I do want to be a good partner and bring this thing to a close, and just be able to move on. I heard roughly what it was, but after seeing it on paper, I, I think we're getting the short straw. That's just my opinion. And I guess I got my question answered, so.
Mr. Mayor. So, to the public and to Ms. Fernandez, thank you for sticking around. The reason that I requested you stick around is your item number three. To the constituents, to Ms. Fernandez, to everybody in Escalon, without making it seem like I'm throwing our partners at the school district under the bus, with 100% conviction, as I sit here before you, the pool is not the city's issue. The mayor, the mayor Pro Tem and myself, for two and a half years, have been pushing hard to try to get the pool open, trying desperately to get the pool open. And we constantly, well, when I was on the two-by-two committee, and now they sit on the two-by-two committee, in my opinion, the school district, the school district carries the lion's share. I mean, you can see the numbers in front of us, 60.16%. And yes, the pool desperately needs upgraded, but I don't believe that the, if we were to do an upgrade, that the city should carry the 60.16% of the burden. And that's really what this boils down to. So we hear you for the need of a pool. I can't speak for the other five, because it's not an agenda item, but in private conversations, we recognize the importance of having a community pool. This, I believe, is the first step for actually the restoration of a true community swimming pool for the city of Escalon. So, I agree with you that we need a pool. My only comment is, to your comment earlier, a pool should be the city's top priority, not this pool. Because the school district, in my opinion, they're not interested in applying any funds, any of their funds, to give our residents a pool.
Well, I think a big part of that also, you can't forget, is how much, how much infrastructure damage there is, right? There's a major issue with the pool that's not salvageable without spending, you know, millions of dollars, which is not realistic. So you have to sometimes rip it off like a Band-Aid and start over. It is, unfortunately, that's what I see in front of me. And I think we can do it, but it takes making some difficult decisions.
You open a public comment, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, sorry, we can do.
Hold on a second, I think Councilmember Kay has.
Yeah, I've actually got quite a few things on this subject note, it's okay. First thing is, do we, do we know when it was that this pool actually fell into disrepair? Whose time was it actually on?
We believe it was on the school district's time.
Okay. Does this appraisal, as it, as it's written, is this for the condition, for this pool and the condition that it's in today?
Yes.
So, we, rather than seeing any kind of return on our investment that we made into the community, we're actually going backwards because someone else allowed the pool to fall into disrepair, is kind of what I'm taking from that.
Yes.
Rather than us seeing a value of it in a usable condition, which it should be had it been maintained while it was not our job to do so. Right? Do I have that correct?
I mean, if, if you're saying, would the value have been higher had it not been in a state of disrepair?
Obviously, it would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a fair statement.
Yeah, I don't think that that's right for us to be taking that kind of hit if it wasn't us that caused the damage to it. Next question I have for you. Well, at the car show on Saturday, I spoke with a member of the community who had vested skin in the game, I guess. He had spent quite a bit of time looking for donations for this when it was built in 2000. I don't see anywhere on here that any public donation money is accounted for. And actually, to the contrary, what I was told is that when a waiting pool was really desired by the community, that one member of the community actually wrote a $25,000 check, and that's written in here as $21,400 waiting pool at the city's cost. Do we know how much money was actually raised and donated from the community towards this?
I don't have any specific figures, but it is, as I've understood, around or less than $20,000.
Total.
Total.
Okay.
From what I understand.
And, you know, like I said, I got this, this is obviously hearsay, and that was my purpose in asking that question. You know, that said, I don't, I think I kind of have to agree with Councilmember Ingle that this is not exactly where we should be ending up on this, whether, you know, you know, we're trying to do this amicably, and last thing that we want is to have any kind of division between council and, and the district. But I'm just not seeing how a pool that, you know, valued at 1.1 million, that, in this condition, I mean, it's probably a $4 million pool, and for us to, you know, return a like feature to this community, we're going to be talking about $5 to $10 million. And all that we're going to have, by the time this is said and done with, is $225,000 or so, to start that, that pool of money coming together for the community. I don't.
Well, I think, I get what you're saying. I do. One of the things I look at is, they can just time us out, right? For, in other words, they can drag their feet, if they wanted to, another three to four years. We're going to basically be pushing this down the road three or four years. And, you know, I get, if you think it's not the right number, maybe you can throw something together you think is the right number. But reality is, I think, when you look at the bigger picture, are we going to sit here and continue to drag our feet and not get the community a swimming pool in the long run? That's what will ultimately end up happening if we're dragging it three, four years down the road before we're even having this conversation again.
Right.
At which point, those numbers drop more.
Well, yeah, we're, we're going off of, you know, the value of a pool that's falling apart, you know, and that, that's kind of, you know, my, you know, I guess that's my gripe with, with accepting this, is that, you know, if we weren't the ones that caused the dam, you know, the pool to not be usable, I don't really see why.
It's a tough pill to swallow. I get it. I was in the same headspace prior about it. But I think, you know, unless I'm wrong, Frank can probably speak to it more, I don't think there is anything legally in that contract that would have allowed us to go in a different direction, you know?
In what way? What do you mean?
Well, like, as far as, like, in other words, if we dissolve it, we dissolve it based on the current situation, right? There isn't some, like, way we can go retroactively to the value of the pool prior to the damage.
No, but, no, but even if you wait 30 years, they still have to, they still are obligated to purchase the city's interest at the end of the term. So they can't wait us out.
Yeah, for, well, for a while, right?
Yeah, they can definitely delay, but.
That's what I'm saying.
And.
So, so it becomes to a situation, do we delay and delay and just know that, you know, we're not going to probably make a swimming pool scenario happen? Or we try to, maybe try to figure out a scenario between now and then while we're juggling this scenario? I'm not quite sure.
Well, I think that what the city does, you know, regardless, that's going to be independent of any decision that we make here. You know, we're, we're talking about a drop in the bucket of, you know, what Councilman Strowman's project that he just finished in Stockton, I mean, you know, $225,000 is peanuts compared to what that facility cost.
Correct. But consider this, Councilmember Kay, and this is for the entire council. First point is, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Collins, didn't we Public Works end up doing maintenance on the swimming pool? So we actually had Public Works guys that had to turn into swimming pool technicians for the.
Along with school district, yes.
Okay.
It was both parties.
And to the question, the question that was raised by Councilmember Ingle, I believe, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, they do not want anybody to touch any of the fields at the high school whatsoever. Is that correct?
They did emphatically say that the high school is off limits.
Current. So basically, the conversation, you were there, I think, but was their concern about, you know, the community taking care of their property, essentially not leaving trash everywhere, you know, you know, all that kind of stuff that goes along with vandalism, stuff like that. And so, in order to get the, you know, back on the campuses like we originally had in the past for the community, the mindset was essentially getting to a point where they did a period of time that was kind of vetting the community, essentially giving the community an opportunity to, to, you know, prove that they could, you know, be on these campuses without creating a concern, so that we would be able to use these properties more. And a lot of that conversation came up because of the fact that, you know, when they closed off their campuses, the community essentially suffered quite a bit, especially on the recreational side, you know, as far as field use.
So obviously, we want to open it up and get community input. My thinking is that, yes, I agree with you, Councilmember Kay, the one point, the, the $300,000 isn't enough. I understand that. But the number one thing that we want to try to do is figure out how we get our community a swimming pool again. As was stated on the previous agenda item, how do we move forward? My suggestion for council to consider is to quote, like, to quote Steve Millerban, take the money and run. And we can take that $225,000 and at least begin the planning process for a true community swimming pool. Hire a designer, look at the Hogan Park Master Plan. Start that process. That way, we're even ahead of the ballgame. So instead of taking the money and putting it into the general fund, consider putting a separate pool line item in the budget and just have it sit there so that we can actually begin the process to the restore a community pool back to the city of Escalon.
I'll just disagree with the community pool. I don't think it'll ever happen. And the point of it being at the high school, hopefully, if it was ever to come back, would be so that it could be used for competition. Otherwise, we're paying maintenance and repair on a pool for use two to three months out of the year. Otherwise, it just sits there. A water feature is an opportunity, but as far as a full-on pool, I don't see it ever happening. By the time we get there, $5, $10 million, it's not going to come out of our general fund. Our city's not growing. We don't have any revenue. We're talking two generations down the road. I do agree that the money is not enough, but I do want to be a good partner with the district. So I think there's something that we can do to tweak this a little bit, to be able to get some type of resolution and, and part ways. You know, for that, it was mentioned earlier that it was kind of like a trial, like, see how we took care of it. It does come at a cost. Just shy, was it $1,183 roughly per day for use? So that should be able to cover.
For the entire, the entire field, facility.
Yeah, so to me, that seems like that should be able to cover maintenance and upkeep and those types of things. At that price, it still seems to be overpriced to me. So if we could get that in, in some form, some form of agreement that that was, you know, potentially doubled to six years, that brings the cost down to just less than $600 a day, which seems like a reasonable cost, that it could be locked in for six years to be able to use that field. I did hear previously that the high school was off limits. I've heard that, but there is a travel team using it, so it's apparently not off limits, just off limits when we ask. I would be willing to stay with the three years if they were willing to open up the track for even those many days for it to be used. Well, I, I get it. I know they're going to say no. But at the same time, I can say no to the $300,000 as well.
And just one caveat, not in the staff report, but in the agreement, they are. And just one caveat, not in the staff report, but in the agreement, they are willing to explore after one year of use, opening up more or additional, more facilities or additional days and that type of thing.
That's a discussion, though. There's no contractual agreement. So really, all they have to do is say, no, we didn't like the way that it went, and now we're not doing it. So it's just too open-ended for me to be able to agree with. I need, I need a solid commitment.
So a quick question for you. If, if they, if they were able to put it in language that, you know, had a review period or something of that nature, I guess what I'm getting, when talking to them, their concern is getting into a long-term situation where we're using their field, and then we have parents out there, you know, and kids not respecting the property, which I totally understand. I think it's something that they're probably not going to see, because at least, I'd like to believe their constituents are going to respect the property. But, but I understand where they're coming from.
No, I see there's a cost, and we're paying for it, at the cost of $1,183 per day for usage.
Correct.
So verbiage was in there that after those three years, they decided to terminate, and they wanted to give us back 50% or...
Something like that.
Whatever. Yeah, if there was a monetary tie to that, that, that there was skin in the game for them. They can't just say no, because at the end of those three years, they could just say, oh, it could have all went great. But they could say, we just don't, we don't want to deal with it anymore.
Yeah, I get you. I see what you're saying. Any, any other input up here on this? Or would you guys, obviously, I want to get input from the audience, but...
Mayor Protem's being pretty quiet. What are your thoughts?
So the hope for the three-year versus the six-year is that in that three-year period, the district will see that the community is helpful for their community. Our community is their community, right? And so if we use these four games and practices, there will be voices heard by the district from our community that, oh, we're not allowed to play there anymore. And so there will be some pushback, hopefully, if that was to happen. What we're really hoping is this is going to go well, and it will be opened up. We did try to negotiate that to be open for the community for recreation purposes, and this is kind of where we dialed back for our pilot program on this.
Which I guess putting in, we could put some more guardrail language in, like Councilman Engle's saying.
Right. The other thing, so question, before this agreement, a couple months ago, we did reach out, because we do need land for recreating purposes, we went over what flag football's looking like right now, right? So our flag football is expanding, and we're looking for more land. And so we did reach out to El Portel to see if we could rent what the daily rent, which is what your teams are probably paying right now, is to rent those fields. At that point, they, they kind, they did not get back to us. They did not allow us to, or from what I understand, did El Portel ever, they never got back to us, and they didn't, they were not willing to rent us those facilities for those daily uses. And this is where we're trying to come in between so that we can get on camp, this is it. We get on campus, we take care of it, and they see positive results from us using the campuses like we did before the fences went up. So this is the try to get our feet on the ground. And in my opinion, if we get people in there, they're going to get feedback from parents and community that they want more help and take care of fields. And that's all I've ever gotten. I coached at the high school for 20 years, and when I had parents around at my games, they volunteered to help and donate and see, oh, your field is in disrepair, please let me help, let's have a field day. And I'm hoping we get on El Portel's campus, and you see the same thing from parental athletes, that please let me help, the El Portel track looks like it needs some help, or the fields need some help. And so this is the, this is the attempt, I guess, to get them to open it up. They are very, very cautious about having anybody. And at the moment, without this, it's nothing. It's, we take the 442, that's fine, but we walk away, and there's a, and honestly, they want the demolition. They're nervous about the demolition costs.
It brings up a great point, as far as recreation goes and the growth that we're seeing in recreation. I think a lot of that growth is because we supplement that program, and it runs in a delta consistently. So we're driving ourselves into debt. While I do want that program to continue, we're accepting other communities, and the other communities, we may not rely on somebody from another town to have respect for our property. And so we're driving ourselves into a delta running, an expanding program where we should be increasing costs and really narrowing it back to the folks in our community rather than supporting everybody else. And then we're putting ourselves at risk here. I mean, the more we talk about it, I, just opinion, but I just keep seeing this as a loser, the more the conversation goes on.
So what, what do you propose as an alternative, Councilmember Engle?
Yeah, so the six years was the first thing that I came up with. Obviously, the high schools is, is a no-go, but I, I think it's still worth fighting over. There's, there's a great track there. They could be utilized by, by a lot of people. It's the only place that somebody could go run. There's bleachers there. It's another place that somebody could go run. I think it would be utilized. I heard a comment earlier that, like, there's only seniors that walk in town. Man, every morning when I'm driving around at 6:00 in the morning or going to the gym, there are people everywhere. They're everywhere. And they're, that's an awesome, safe opportunity, daytime, nighttime. I get football is, is huge here, and obviously there would be some restrictions on when that could be used, right, outside of football season completely. But to see some of those days opened up and a actual written commitment for a longer time period...
Just so you're aware...
Relates to money, to me, the way that it's proposed.
Just so you're aware, we, these are all things that we brought up already. And this is where we got to, like, initially, there wasn't, it wasn't even a, it wasn't even a starter. And so this is like where they're, this is where we were able to get them to, as far as, you know, giving the community an opportunity, because reality is our fields are getting hammered. We are going to end up bleeding money out, fixing them all the time. At the same time, I agree with you, as far as the fees, I think, you know, raising some of the fees for people that are outside the community makes a ton of sense to me. But, but a lot of the questions, well, all the questions that you're bringing up are good questions, but they are things that we have kind of been going back and forth with them for, for a while. And so we're finally, basically got them to this conversation here. And I could see, you know, tweaking the numbers, for sure, that would make sense. But I don't know necessarily if they would be, they would be open to, to any bigger starting point on their properties, to be honest with you.
I, I don't, I don't want to be a tough negotiator in that, in my statement here, but it doesn't sound to me like they really have a choice. With inflation, this valuation at 1.1 million dollars, let's, let's go ahead and sit on it for three years, and let's evaluate it again and see what it costs. Because then you're...
Yeah.
It's going to go up, right?
And I, that's where I'm...
$10 million? Jalen, Jalen made a face like, maybe not, like, maybe it's in such disrepair that it's just trash and goes the other way.
Well, that's most, that's where I'm at, just knowing what I know. So i- it's not a good thing. So I, my gut feeling is that, but I could be wrong.
Is this the opening, were these opening numbers in negotiation, this is just being presented to us now? So this is just the start of that conversation?
Well, yeah, from, coming to the council, yes. We've thrown things back and forth, like Councilman Strowman said, for a couple of years now. And we finally got it to a reasonable conversation.
But to, but to Councilmember Engle's point, this isn't their first offer. Well, I think it's important that the public knows what their first offer was. Staff, can you tell us what that offer was?
Do we want to do that?
You're going to make it.
He made a face like he wants to.
I don't think...
We are, I think we're trying to keep a great relationship also with the district, and that's one of the points of this, is we are trying, I mean, this is not what ideal would be. It would be 440, and I, and this is what I came up. I said, yeah, it's 442, open it up for recreation to the public, your public's my public, and that's it. And of course, obviously, we've gone back and forth from there.
Real.
And this is where we've come to. But we are trying to get into a good relationship. And what I'm hoping is that this opens that up. I want to put the pool behind us, because it's all we hear about on Facebook residence every two months. It's just, you know, what's the city going to do, and what's the district going to do? Well, this is, we need to put it behind us so we can move forward with our relationship.
The question everybody gets asked about the district, it's always council that is to blame.
All right, yeah. And so this is it. This is the barrier that is holding us back from having a good relationship with the district right now, and us moving forward so that we can use each other's facilities more freely. And we need more land, honestly, because we did use those facilities before the fences went up, and we got acres and acres of our recreating land taken away. And so it's very, very limited. So this is, this is the...
Why was it, why?
Why did the fences go up?
Yeah. Is it just a closed campus kind of deal?
I think so, back in the day. I mean, because it was always...
School safety, school shooting.
And it's all over schools, all schools. And I think a lot, that's more what it came down from the state, more than it came down from the district.
This used to be an open, basically, this is the thing, is, is the school here, the high school has, and the little school, the middle school and Dent have always been a big central component of the community as a whole. And reality is that partnership has kind of dissolved, or got, you know, they're butting heads for a long time with issues. And what we're trying to do is get this behind us, move forward, get the community in a north, north pointing direction with, you know, a community swimming pool. I know you don't believe in the idea of it, which I understand, but I do. And I think that in the long run, that that swimming pool can be a major financial boom. And I say that because if you ever go to swimming competitions, you'll see 1,000 people there. And they're spending money to be there. And when you start looking at, using that as the potential of having a third party taking care of it, running it as a business, allowing the community to use those facilities when those particular things are being done.
Every time I'm sorry, you're bleeding a little bit, sir.
You shot in the air?
Yeah.
Just joking. Sorry, bad, bad joke. So, so, you know, I guess what I'm looking at is, I think that there's a way forward there, but it, it really is predicated on getting this whole problem behind us, and allowing the, the district to see that we, we are a community that they can, that they can get behind. They are a community that is going to take care of their properties and have pride in their properties. And the only way we're going to get there, thank you, the only way we're going to get there, I think, is sometimes having to make a difficult decision. And I think reworking some of these, I'm, I'm not necessarily against it. I'd be more than happy to take it to them. But I think that, you know, I want to get past the whole finger-pointing stuff and just get this thing dealt with, so that we, as a community, can move forward and, and not, not move backwards, I guess is what I'm getting at.
I don't want to belabor the point, but to your point just a moment ago, Mr. Mayor, I, I apologize for asking about the first board offer. I'm not trying to point fingers. My point is, is that for two and a half years, we've been trying to get somewhere. And this is the somewhere that we're trying to get at.
Yeah, and I think there's some things, obviously, that can be tweaked. I'm not against that at all. But I do think we need to figure out, if this isn't the plan, then, then what is it? You know what I'm saying? So that we can get this behind us, and we can deliver a swimming pool to our community if that's what they want. We can get off the campus there and just know that it is what it is. You know, sometimes you gotta, you know, sometimes you gotta learn a lesson the hard way. I think this is one of those situations.
Since you're on that two-by-two board, Mr. Mayor, and you're willing to take a look at that again, I would just ask that, while we do want to be a good partner, we also want to be good stewards of our positions. So I would just ask that during that next negotiation session, that you try and leave out of there with your best and, and final dollar amount, right? That you feel good walking out of there saying, this is the absolute best that we can do, and it's fair enough with both parties. Originally, I was going to ask that question, but since you made the comment that, you know, you see there's a little ability to move there, it just leaves me to believe that there's, there's some extra that's left on the table.
Good question. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying that that's the case. I'm not, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm willing to go put it in front of them. What I, I don't, I can't necessarily say it's going to be, that they're going to, you know, bend at all. But if you want to go put it back in front of them, I'm not against that, and ask them for maybe a little bit better, you know, firm up the language a little bit as far as, you know, that three-year process and how it looks and everything. Like, I'm not against that at all. I just thinking, you know, when I look at this, I think we're talking about, you know, maybe tweaking some numbers enough to get to where we can get some field space for our community. We can take pressure off the community center. At the same time, we can, you know, put this pool there behind us, get it in a place where it's safer on campus at the same time, come up with a much better solution, long-term as far as getting a community guard, I'm sorry, community swimming pool going, you know, off-campus, on public property, I guess is what I'm getting at. So I have no problem putting it in front of them. I just, I felt like it was their final, but maybe, maybe they'd be willing to, you know?
Mr. Mayor, can we open it up to public comment?
Anything else up here?
No.
Okay. We'll go to public comment?
You guys are keeping me up way past my bedtime tonight. Okay, so I have several things. One, it's Escalon School District, correct?
Correct.
Who are we? Escalon.
Hmm?
Oh, they should be serving us. When did they close those campuses? Right around COVID, when everybody was locked in their houses, and we were already walking the fields, and all of a sudden, we couldn't walk anymore. So I'm sorry, if they wanted to be community-minded, they've already proven their cards. Okay, they didn't take care, the pool has not been taken care of. It's, they've already proven the cards. I'm not against our school district. I love our superintendent. I know him personally. But they're not team players with Escalon. Take, you have a contract, and the contract says something. So why are we negotiating? Take the contract. It's on their property. They want to demolish it. They don't want us on their property, let them demolish it. Play a little harder. Take the money and go invest it in our fields at Hogan. Get our own fields. Open them up. So you want a swimming pool? Don't do it with city money. You're going to pay way too much. Get another group like you got with the skateboards, a nonprofit. Let them raise the money. The community will get behind it if the community wants a pool. Let them do it. Let them fund it. It'll be cheaper. Now you got everything. Don't roll over for somebody who's already proven that they don't want to work with you, and they're not going to open, and they're not going to do things for us. So go, you've got a contract. The contract is very clear that, am I right or am I wrong? If the contract is very clear that if it's terminated, they therefore will pay this much to the city. No negotiation. You've already got a contract. Take it. They don't want you on your property, let them demolish it, unless that's in the contract. If it's in the contract that you pay for the demolition, or you cover some of that cost, okay, then honor the contract. So be a good neighbor. And sometimes, good neighbors are, as you say, tough. So make the hard call. Okay? All right.
And that would be waiting till 2030. And I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Okay, but if you terminate...
We can't term, we would wait to the end of the term, and then they would pay us that 39%. So it would be in 2030, and that's what, I just wanted to make clear, that's what the argument is, is instead of do this...
Try and negotiate that they can't, if you can terminate it, see if they can't terminate it for that amount and walk away. And if they're not going to, then again, they're already proving what kind of neighbors they are. Okay? And they're not going to open, and at that case, I'm sorry, Engle was correct as far as them opening, they're not going to open it up. They've already proven that, and they can use any excuses. Too open-ended. There's no, and I appreciate your efforts. Don't get me wrong. I'm not against what you've done. You all know, I support what you're, what you're doing. But if that's the case, and if that's the way they're, they're going to play hard, I just don't see why we're bending over. Okay? And we're not getting good for it. Not really.
Anyone else? Thank you, thank you, Sherry. Excuse me. Anyone else like to say anything? No? Okay, we'll go online. Okay, we'll bring it back. No? Okay. We'll go online. Okay. We'll bring it back. Um, are you guys okay with us taking it back to council, or taking it back to the district and addressing some of the finer points?
I do have one question. Uh, so roughly, if it was the full amount, less than seventy-five thousand dollars, it leaves with, uh, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. I am really curious. I, I appreciate Sheri's idea. We've talked about Hogan expansion. It's there. We just looked at the master plan. I'm really curious what three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars could do to those fields and not have us rely on El Portel or the high school for that matter.
Yeah. I mean, definitely you could put it into expanding. Uh, I think the big pinch point was the water, right, Justin? If, if I'm not right.
Yeah, but a lot of that can be upgraded with, with funds.
Hmm. So, so currently, if we expand it on the bait, on the system we have now, we're talking three, we can go out three or four acres.
Right.
Right? Um, so you're saying we can hypothetically take this money, put in another, like nicer setup that's allow us to go with more acreage or saying?
We can get more water flowing there. We just need to tap into our main, get access.
We're talking, I mean, obviously you can't say a specific number, but we're talking like tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands or?
Tens.
Tens? Okay. So, I mean, we can definitely take it back and just say, hey, we don't want to do the field use and just know that the fields are going to get hammered for a couple more years and it is what it is.
Longer-term solution, right? I mean, that's, that's the future recreation.
And we would just try and use some community parks.
And yeah, we would have to use the, utilize the community parks and just.
The, the problem with football, and that was the reason why we wanted El Portel and need El Portel. Need another, need a flat park is because that is during rainy season. And so all of those basin parks are filled with water. And so that's why we, that's why we were trying to, well, first we tried to rent it for soccer. So maybe we can go back and try and rent it for flag football. But, I mean, they still haven't talked to us about it. So, um, that's like a non.
Well, I think, talking to you guys, I think the best next step is we'll go back and see what they're willing to do. And then we'll kind of bring it back to council, I think, if you feel.
I have a question for, uh, city manager. So you've had a discussion with the superintendent about this. Do you think they, they would be, and I, I obviously am not part of the two-by-two committee anymore, but I mean, what, what's your take? Do you, do you guys think that they're willing to negotiate? Or do you guys think that this is the best and final and we're just delaying the process?
I don't, I don't know. It, I really don't know. I would have to take it back to them and ask them and, and find out from there. But, you know, it's hard, it's, it's, it's hard to say. What I would say is they were, it was, it was like pulling teeth to get to here. Okay? And we got to here and that's about all we could do without pushing a swimming pool thing to 2030. You know, and that's kind of the mindset Pro Tim and I had going into this is trying to get a problem solved so that it's truly solved. You know what I'm saying? I could, we could sit in these chairs and just kick the bucket down the road and it is what it is. Sometimes you just got to make difficult decisions. And I think tweaking some of this, like Pro, uh, like Councilmember Engel saying, I don't see an issue with, maybe they'll be willing to do that. But I think a dramatic change of this, probably not, is, is my gut feeling.
What's, what's your feelings on it, city manager?
You, you never can tell. I mean, I, I always say all things happen with political will. That's why a full council deliberates on these matters. You had two council members, you know, in negotiations and really in two years of, of discussions. And, you know, I think we all thought we brought forward what was probably doable based on the discussions and based on the district's input. Um, I, I wanted to make it clear, this was not a first offer. This was after months and months and months of, of discussions and negotiations. First times it's come formally before the council, uh, but not a, not a first offer. And, you know, to Councilmember Strowman's, there, you know, our first offer and then their first counter was much, much, much lower. Um, so we, we have got here, we've got here through a couple of different paths. We did start a conversation on just field use and, and opening up community facilities for the community. And, and these conversations have dovetailed a bit because we got the appraisal on the pool around the same time. And, and so these, these conversations about field use, and there is some benefits to field use. I would, I would love to have enough field space for all of our recreation programs, but we don't right now. And, you know, even if we expand into Hogan, depending on how long that takes, um, we may not have enough space immediately for our sports programs. The next several seasons is, is really what we're referring to. Um, and there's use in the long-term of, of sort of opening that gate a little bit to the school district facilities and, and getting in hopefully on a small scale and then a broader scale and into the high school and, and others, long-term. Um, that is, that is part of the goal. So I cannot specifically speak to, you know, how much room is, is left on the negotiating table. Obviously, that's, that's not our discussion. I will tell the council that, um, the district is slated to bring this item before their board tomorrow. Um, so obviously they will have heard whatever decision is, is made here. I'll just take a breath and, and say one last thing, not germane to that, but, um, I hope to the conversation. I hope what I, I said about the value and use wasn't misunderstood or, or misconstrued. The original agreement says fair market value. That's the other type of, of appraisal that you can get. And that's really trying to get to the highest and best use. If you think about residential or commercial, to get to the highest and best use, they'll do comps. There's no way to do a comp on a pool. And so there's this other, it's called a value and use basically. And, and that's how they get to some sort of value for the pool. So, um, it's not because it's no longer in use or anything like that. That's just a coincidence in terms. But it's really differentiating itself from a fair market value where they do comps, um, to, to derive it a value. Um, but yes, if the pool was in a, a better condition, the appraisal value would be higher. I don't think three or four or five times as high, but higher, you know, ten, twenty, maybe thirty percent. Um, so I just want to make that, that clear as, as everyone deliberates.
Councilmember, uh, Engel, on the third bullet point, um, what if we amended that language to say that the city, district provides the city three years of use of El Portel fields with an option for an additional three years, including additional district facilities for the purposes of it, of its recre- recreation program and practice needs at the discretion of both the school district and the city. So adding that specific language to take this out.
I think legally it's vague. And so there's no dollar amount associated. There's no guarantee. It's just another what-if statement in there or potential. And there's no contractual obligation by our, either party to, uh, agree. So we, we could put all the extra stuff in there that we want unless there's something tangible associated to it. I don't, I mean, council, does that hold up anywhere? It's got to be.
No, it's just a, it's just an agreement to explore it later. That's all it is.
Yeah.
Non-binding.
Yeah. It's just a conversation. We, we promise to talk to you about it.
And if they say, huh, we don't want to talk about it, then they don't want to talk about it, we're done.
Okay. So, uh, general counsel, how would we change this, change this wording?
Say shall.
Okay.
They shall provide this, you know, kind of like what we have now. We just have to add whatever facilities we wanted and whatever amount of years we wanted, uh, whatever days and just would say district shall.
So would it be agreeable if we said what I stated a few moments ago and just added the word shall? Instead of taking this on for another time? Because when's your next two-by-two meeting? In October, which means we won't see this till.
Next year.
November. And if, so if we can get the language that this council wants to see in this, then that's what we present them as their count, as a counter.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine. I'm good with that as long as, you know, I understand where Councilman Engel's coming from as far as making sure that we, you know, we have a little tougher language as far as being able to use those fields long-term. So I think if, if, if we could do what, uh, Councilman Strowman's saying, uh, what Frank's saying with the shall, and then, you know, throw it in, you know, what Councilmember Engel has.
I think your own, your only option to actually make that stick, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, it would be to actually change the years of use on it so that you have a specified number. Otherwise, I, I don't see how, it, it doesn't still become open-ended and the possibility of the district making whatever decision it is that they make.
Well, what about six years with a review at three years where this, the, the, um, the district can opt out if there is an issue?
Look, bottom line is this to.
You know what I'm saying? Like.
Right. To Councilmember Kay, Councilmember Engel, they are very nervous that something is going to happen on campus. Whether it be vandalism, whether that be garbage, what have you. And so there were, that's why they don't want to do this three-year, they want, they don't want to go further than three years technically. But if everything goes well after three years to what the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim said, they're willing to listen and they're willing to come to the table and, and work with us. And so I think if we can include language in there that says, I mean, maybe we ask for six years and tell them that as the mayor noted, the, the district and the, the city will review this agreement after three years to ensure that all use is acceptable to both parties and move on down the road.
Well, I'm hoping that in three years we renegotiate it and open it up even more. I don't want to be stuck with the forty days for three years. And maybe we can renegotiate in that third year, like, uh, two and a half years down the road. Put something where, uh, district and city sit down to renegotiate new terms, uh, in the third year, something like that. Um.
So why don't we?
That's where I'm at. But I do want to note, in these meetings, it does seem that the high school campus is going to be absolutely, we are not getting on that campus. And we have to show that everything works out well on the El Portel campus before they even consider the high school campus. And putting that language in there, I mean, we can consider it. I just think it's not going to come back as approved. We're just going to be here discussing it again and deciding whether to move forward with what we originally have right now. So that's just a note that I, I don't think the high school's going to be in this contract. They're at that word, those words will not most likely be in here. We can give it a try.
If they don't want to partner with us, let's not. Let's take the money and run and not, not count on them. Let's, let's expand Hogan Park, man, and not rely on them. Cause the discussion's not going to change. And what happens when they get a new super who's anti-sports or whatever? We don't know what's going to happen in three years, right? The, the, the recreation activities that happen in this town, if, if they are on city property, then we have ultimate control over who, what, when and where. We're putting it on them. It's just whatever their administration wants to do. And right now it's only a guarantee for three or we extended out for six.
Okay. So what I'm saying is that we changed that last bullet point to include not three years. We'll have six years to, to your point. That will buy us time to be able to expand the park, look at other options. And then for their peace of mind, that the, this agreement will be reviewed again in three years to ensure that we are complying with the safety and security of the facilities.
And just, you know, again, the, the couple of years discussion about this, there was desire to continue to be good partners. I, I think we, as a community, are stronger if we work together. And that's the background going into some of this discussion. No, you know, pushback to, to your thought about, you know, the full freight here, the four hundred and forty-two thousand. Just as there was negotiation, it was, there was perceived benefit to being long-term partners.
What was that benefit?
Just we're, I don't know if we can think of anything directly, but we're just stronger as a community if, if we work together. Now, you could.
So that's, like, Justin could probably speak to it. Him and John work intimately all the time. Um.
Yeah. And I think regardless of what goes on the pool, that's going to continue. I mean, we're going to continue to work with them.
Which is an example, I guess, is what I'm giving.
Yeah. But we, uh, we, we help each other generally now on our, our fields. And just in, in fact, they had their, uh, GPS machine go out on their football fields. So we'd lend their paint machine. But when our record season started, we used their GPS mean to get our fields going. That's just in short in the last month.
So would this council be open to amending that last bullet point?
I am. I, I don't.
When you, when you look at that.
To what?
That language that they have highlighted on here is essentially what you, what it is that you're saying in the first place.
Right. That's right.
Is that after one year, they're, they're willing to take a look at, at it and expand it further if things are going well. And, you know, could go longer. So I mean, that language is really already there even.
But I'm trying to address Councilmember Engel's point of extending it out for six years.
Well, and, and having it in writing, I, I understand. Um, and I would like to see something to, to that fashion rather than, uh, that, that's kind of a, that's kind of a catch-22 in, in my opinion. Um, you know, to, to his point, you know, the additional money, uh, you know, given to our public works department to expand Hogan, uh, Anis Park and, you know, give us our own fields, uh, where we're not relying on anyone else. Um, and unfortunately, me as a, a newer council member, looking at, at what we, you know, what's in front of me, I, I feel like we really haven't had a very good partner. Uh, this pool situation has left a very bad taste in my mouth. Uh, as a new council member who's constantly being berated about something that I can't affect change on, uh, you know?
And that's, that, to that point, that's why, I mean, for two and a half years, the three of us were working on this. I, I personally think that they're not going to budge off this three hundred thousand dollars. And so that's why I noted that, look, we'll take the three hundred thousand dollars, either invest it in the swimming pool or invest it in expanding the fields. We have, we have it in writing that we can use the El Portel fields while we figure out what we're going to do with the Hogan Park and keep moving forward. Cause I mean, they're not going to move, in my opinion, I believe that they're not going to go higher than the three hundred thousand dollars. Does that shortchange us? Yes. But at the same time, we can, if we can take that three hundred thousand dollars and our investment guru over here can figure out what to do with that three hundred thousand dollars to get the money that we need to do for the residents of Escalon.
I can't earn on what I don't have.
Exactly. So.
No pressure. No.
Well, if we're going to have this conversation about the expansion at Hogan Park, we, and Justin's saying he needs tens of thousands of dollars to get the water line over there. We do this, we get the three hundred to, to twenty-five, right? We put in the water, we level and seed. And there you go. We have soccer and football fields, at least for right now, to get this going. Um, that is an option, but that would be that this agreement goes through. If not, we wait until 2030. And if we wait till 2030, we'll have the money and we can do it then. Or we can take the three hundred and we can do it now. So, I, I mean, that's, that's a discussion we can have. We just haven't been discussing how fast we're moving forward with the Hogan expansion, except for the skateboard. So, um, you know, that's, that's a whole.
Another thing.
A whole nother, like, if that's what we want to talk about and the reasons and what we're doing with this money, then.
Well, I mean, I think that would be logical to put it into the fields. I mean, ultimately, we need our own space, right? At some point. But we're either working with the, the community, with the district to provide that space, um, or we're not. And my thought is we work with them at least for a period of time that gives us an opportunity to then, you know, push this, um, push that grass out. Um, it's kind of a thought. But, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's naive. That's all, I guess.
So.
No, this is, to me, this is two different conversations.
Yeah, they're two separate.
And so, you know, in the room, so when we're in there, in the room, I'm getting the feelings that they're come, that everybody is wanting the best for our citizens. Like, we're starting to, the vibe is changing where we do want to work together. And I know we brought up that the fences went up during COVID and this and that. The staffing has changed both here and there dur- since that time. And so our board has changed, their board has changed, our manager has changed, their super has changed. So everything has changed. It's different people. And as negative as that is to think, it was a different group they were dealing with here with different, I said vibes, we'll say vibes, different vibes. And they had different vibes. And so now we're, we're coming to a place where I think. And so now we're, we're coming to a place where I think we are back to where we can have a good relationship. And so that's, I think, part of the, the thing, trying to move us forward and be able to get people's feet, community members' feet on those campuses again as they are community campuses. Now, that's one conversation. The other conversation is, what are we doing with Hogan Park? How do we get the money? And if we get the money, is that what we're using it for, to move forward with our rec stuff? So, I mean, there's just two different, two different things.
So, Mr. Mayor, I am going to make a motion that we sign the termination and settlement agreement with Escalon Unified School District, purchase of the city's interest of the pool facilities located at Escalon High School, or the 2000 swimming pool facilities agreement between the City of Escalon and the Escalon Unified School District, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'm going to put my faith in the, if you don't mind, I was actually going to make the motion myself and say, I'm going to put my faith in, in, uh, the school district. And hopefully, they can, uh, they can prove to be a better partner than I feel like I have had in the past. And I would like to second this motion if that's okay with you.
Okay, uh, we have a second, first and a second, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right, so we'll go on to number, s, number eight.
Can we take about a two-minute break?
Uh, yeah.
Or keep going.
We're almost there.
Or keep going and I'll be back.
Okay, how far off are you?
Just keep going.
Okay, never mind, we're going to finish.
Okay.
Okay, what do we got?
I know everybody is, is half asleep, but.
Hammered it.
This particular item we've seen before, it's the Calpers pay down plan. We've got it in our current budget, we're doing this this year. It's going to drop our Calpers balance down. That's all good, that's great. And the reason why we want to do this additional step is to kind of codify this into the next nine years. We want to be sure that our income, as our revenues drop, because they are expected to drop, that that matches our expenses going, going down. Right now, we have a situation where we have the measure P money and everybody's really happy about all that we can spend that on. Spent it five different ways, as we like to say. But one of the things that we can do with that money is pay down this big albatross of a debt that we have. And by doing that, we end up with more money in year 11. Actually, we start getting more money in year eight. But by year 11, we won't have a $500,000 a year payment. So all these different things that we want for the city, pools and all these different things, we can now start to put that money into something different rather than just paying it to Calpers. So, I went too far. No, I didn't, there we go, okay. So we started out with this a couple of months ago when we did the budget about what was Calpers, what was the unfunded portion? And it's basically the amount that we have to pay in the retirement funds based on the actuarials that Calpers comes up with. They say, we need $500,000 for this one employee to retire, and you only have 200,000. So we want that out of the 300,000. And it's all based on what they have figured out. They have told us these numbers and we have no control over it, but we have to pay it. So, one of the things we can do is to pay this down and it removes the interest portion. So we were already doing this, we're going to do that for this, this year. We're going to drop our balance down. And that's a really good thing. If we do it over 10 years, in year 10 and 11, we will have that almost $500,000 a year. And it goes up to $700,000. We'll have that in the bank instead of paying it out. And that's going to be really important as our sales tax revenues decline. So this one here just shows us for the one rate plan for, um, safety personnel. So we can see right now in 2025, 26, we're paying $199,000. And that's what we're paying this, this year. And we have made a one-time lump sum payment, so it's dropped everything down by 3%. So we've already done part of this plan by paying the lump sum, getting the small amount. The next portion we're going to do is to pay an additional $314,000. And we'll actually drop our balance by $628,000. Because for every dollar that we pay in here, we end up the effect of $2. So it's a really great spot for us to save expenses. I can't earn more money except for the investments and we can only do that with a small pool of money that we have. So the next area we have to go to is reducing the expenses.
Before we shoot over there, it's assuming a 6.8% return.
6.8 and they've been doing six.
They've been doing, I was going to ask you what the historical was.
Yeah, 5.5. They had one year that was seven. But this is the other thing, we don't earn as much, Cal, Calpers. We don't earn as much as we're supposed to, as we think. So we're just going to tack it on to the end of what you, you owe. Because the actuarial said it had to be 6.8, so now they re-figure everything and they say, oh, sorry, you owe another 20 grand, 30 grand, 40 grand.
Quick question, my understanding then is, is this, this is going to do two things. It's going to allow us to, um, be in less of a position of bankruptcy. If we had a major market swing, it's also going to, um, a lot, free up a lot more dollars in the future that we can then use for whatever we need to fund within the city.
Right.
By being fiscally responsible.
So this even just in this one slide, we can see we go from 199,000 to 274, $75,000 by year 20, 2030, if we do nothing. We just keep paying the minimum payment. And we've talked about this before, but it's much like your credit card. Pay the minimum, it's going to take you 50 million years to pay it off. It's the same thing with this. They look at this and they say, you're perfectly welcome to just pay the minimum amount and we'll keep sending you a bill for it. But if you want to pay the additional amounts, we're going to make you work for it. So you can either do what they consider a reorganization of it and then the payment's always higher, or we can just take it upon ourselves to ask them, hey, give me a invoice for the higher amount. I want to pay an extra 314,000 this year so that I drop my, my balance down. And they'll, they'll do it.
And this will also.
We have to initiate that, so.
This will also guarantee retirements get paid, basically.
There's that portion too. I mean, it does about five different things. There's the retirement that we must pay, you know, we're, we're in this contract with everybody. It preserves a lot of the cash. Just in this one scenario here, I can show you where it's going to save quite a bit. On this one line, it's 500,000. And I say line because there's different plans. There's safety plans and non-safety and miscellaneous. And we don't have to get into the weeds and all that. But as we pay these different lines down, we're saving $2.04 for every dollar that we're putting, putting in. So that's where the power of this particular plan comes, comes in. There's the lump sum payoff in the beginning that drops us 3.14%. And then it's about $25,000 a year, it's not big money. But we take that money and put it with this other, to make up the 314, pay it down, and in year 10 and 11, the city actually has more money by about $2 million, 2.1.
That's dramatic.
2.2. I can't make that money with investments, I just can't. There's not enough capital to, in order to do that. But think of what that money could do in 10 years. And that's kind of what I'm asking. I'm asking for the commitment for a 10-year plan so the city's in a better spot. So we'll keep going. I only got a few slides on this one, don't worry. So right now, the UAL payment is about 8.9% of the entire general fund budget. And as we saw in this previous slide, it goes up. It keeps going up every year if we do nothing, so.
Do those numbers account for like, over that time period, pay raises, so every year?
No.
So that, that number actually is going to grow even more than what we're seeing?
Right.
And as the value of our dollar decreases, it, this is kind of like a safeguard, it's a blanket. This is just, I appreciate the plan and we're trying to get somewhere. We need to take some action, so I, I appreciate that. But these could be severely underestimated.
The savings are underestimated because I don't want to overpromise what we can save. But by the end of the 10 years, I'm pretty darn sure we're going to save a lot more. Because it drops the balance, it drops what we're required to pay. So it's putting more money in the bank, we're able to earn on that, that money. And we have the possibility of making really good choices when an opportunity comes up for the city. We'll have the cash to do what we need to do. Barring any catastrophic downturn, you know, like we've seen in the past. So we can kind of see that at 8.9% of the budget, it's a good amount that we need to get rid of when going forward. And we talk about the $1 turns into 204. Paying it down not only reduces what we owe them, it puts us in a good position if, if, big if, someday we wanted to get away from Calpers, we have this unfunded piece taken, taken care of. It gets us one step closer to that, puts money in the bank. These are all good things. And I would love to see it happen faster, but I think 10 years is the fastest that we can do with, with a small city. So this is the other fun thing. Quite a lot of the sales tax that the city uses for our general fund is based in two sectors. So we've got transportation, which is mostly gas. And we have food sales, which is mostly fast food. We have a third sector, which is mostly con, concrete sales. And all these things are based on whether people buy gas or they feel comfortable enough in order to go out and make additions to their home with construction, that type, type of thing. So as the economy gets better, these types of things will get better. But if people are buying electric cars, the amount of gasoline that we sell will go, go down. And that's 42.9%. So if we lose 10% of that, 5% of that, think of how much the revenue coming in will go, go down. So the estimates that we have are, what I have here is the best case scenario. And this is from the people that prepare all of our sales tax reports. So they're, they're pretty close. If I look to see what they estimated we would receive last year, they were within $8,000. So they're, they're really, really close. This starts to teeter in '28, '29, and we start to lose revenues coming in. That's measure P, that's base tax. So our expenses have to drop, at least to match this, just to stay at a zero level. So if we can reduce our tax, if our tax is reduced beyond this because of, you know, we have such a heavy amount in, in that one se, sector, we're going to see a lot more loss in those red areas. So those expenses have to drop with it, or more than. And this is one way where we can, can do it. Going through in small areas and reducing costs, there's only so much we can, can, can do. It costs a base amount to run the city, to run the water, to run the rec program, to run, everything has a, a nice baseline cost. So there's only a few areas where we can really recoup some of this expense. And it's, it's going to be in the in, in interest expense area. So we have a few areas, we've got like the loan for the buildings, we've got a couple of other things. But this is the best bang for the buck here. So if we start here and we start working on the other ones later, great. But I think this gets us the most money back in the, in the bank account. So what I'm asking for is quite a lot, it's $314,000 a year for tent, for another nine years. Because we're already in year, year one. And I think we can provide reporting so that we can see the real benefit of it and we can show the community how much we are saving by using that 314,000. So.
And, and obviously, Selinda, this is subject to, you're going to put this in the budget every year.
Correct.
So you're just looking for a direction to go ahead, working this plan, but it's not like the council's not going to be able to audible if it had to in any given budget year, correct?
That's a very good point. In the way that we're doing this here, we have total control over it. So if there is a downt, downturn, because we aren't going to Calpers and saying, hey, reorganize this for, for, for me, we're doing it ourselves. We then can say, no, this year, we're not going to, going to do it. Something, we have to buy $800,000 worth of something, all of a sudden. There's no money for it, great, we just back off for that, that year. So that would be something that the council, each year, we could say, well, you know, it just can't be, be done. Or we're only going to put 100,000 in, whatever. But the 314 is the target, that gets us the 10-year payoff and that gets us more of the money when I really truly believe the sales tax numbers are going to drop and we're going to, we're going to need it.
Well, I mean, to me, it's, it seems like the most fiscally responsible thing to do for the community. But, uh, that's just me, I don't know how everyone else feels up here.
I think we're, it's kind of, we're investing in the long-term financial health of the city, not just the short-term, but, so that shows the community that we're looking both short-term and long-term, which goes back to the strategic plan goal of fiscal stability.
Otherwise, this could be a very slippery slope and eventually it's bankrupt in the town. I mean, we've seen it.
I don't like the B-word, but yeah.
But it has, I mean, like Stockton, right? We saw that. I could be wrong, but my gut feeling is this is the right decision.
We end up with a bag of money that it takes to run the city.
Yeah.
And there's only so many people putting money into the bag. That bag does not get any smaller, but our tax base is getting smaller. And we're not getting more people, we may not get a, a big business that'll come give us more tax base. So with what we have now, the people we have now, the businesses we have now, I really think this is one good way that we can put more money in the bank later on so where the city is strong and can do pools and other things. Whereas right now, there's just, there's really no hope of that type of project.
Any, any questions up here before I take it out to the community? Any questions, thoughts? All right, community, you want to say anything?
We got Mark.
Okay, online, say anything? No? All right, bring it back. Any last minute thoughts or anyone want to make a motion?
I think that's a, a great plan, I'm gladly motion to approve this.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, we got two on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. And we'll go to council communications. I would start with Councilman Kay.
We've reached the end, huh? I mean, it being almost a month, I guess there are a few things to talk about. Uh, Councilman Strowman and myself and the city manager met with Senator McNerney. Was that last week?
That's Friday. Two Fridays ago.
Two Fridays ago, a couple of weeks ago. That meeting went very well. He informed us that he actually had a bill on the floor that is going to help SJID's cause, SB 24. It had been voted on, it was being split. Uh, I have not checked back in on that to see if there is any progress on the, the bill was being split into two things. Um, and essentially, the assembly was going to get credit for one of them and the senate was going to get credit for the other. Uh, but the whole idea was to basically make it where large utility providers could not stop a municipality from taking over and condemning lines, which would.
So when do you think we'll get clarity on it?
Supposed to check back in with us.
Yeah, yeah, we should be hearing back from him, you know, I would assume soon, especially if, if that ends up, you know, passing. So that was a, a really good meeting, um, really good news. We had our first EDC meeting since then, Economic Development Committee. Uh, that went really well, really appreciate the, uh, three members of the community that joined us for that and, uh, they seemed very excited about, um, working on this and with Councilmember Strowman, myself and, uh, and the city manager to, hopefully, uh, Selinda, you'll, you'll probably like this, you know, I don't really like to go on a diet, so I just work harder. So I'm kind of hoping what we can do is get the city working harder so we don't have to be on such a tight diet. I think all of us are, are pretty amped up about, you know, good ways for us to start developing the economy in Escalon and growing it so that that tax revenue that you're seeing dropping off in our future, at least maybe we can stabilize it? That's the hope. Want to, I want to thank, thank the Lions Club for putting on such an awesome car show and all the work that they do. Uh, I'm sure that Councilman, uh, Engel will, will mention it, but I can't sing his praises enough. He, he puts on a great show down there, his club puts on a great show down there. They did a fantastic job, uh, really enjoyed my time down there as well. All that and the, uh, one thing that I have that I would like to, uh, run by the rest of council, uh, and this is on our subject of, of a pool, and this was actually an idea that, um, yeah, city, city manager had kind of mentioned, uh, and he wasn't in such a big hurry on it given that, uh, we just passed measure P in the last election cycle. But I would like us to explore the idea of us taking out a bond initiative and essentially putting it in front of the voters. If they want a pool as bad as they claim that they do, why don't we set it in front of them and give them the opportunity to vote on it and pay for it out of a bond measure rather than city council trying to come up with a way to pay for something that at least in the near future seems impossible?
I will definitely support that discussion.
Yeah, I would be willing to see where that goes.
Awesome.
See where.
I appreciate you guys. Uh, that was pretty much all that I had.
All righty then.
I think I, I think I covered enough there, huh?
Good work. Well, I guess this question will ask for Councilman Engel. Um, Councilman Engel, want to go next? I was going to ask you how many cars you had.
Uh, we, yeah, Lions Club doesn't have official numbers, but, uh, we, we believe it was more than 250, so potentially a little down from, from previous years, but still a great show nonetheless, great participation. It went really well and, um, you know, I think technically from where I'm sitting, I'm not supposed to talk about it, so I'll move on. supposed to talk about it, so I'll move on. And I'd, I'd like to see if I can get some support to bring rec fees up and try and make some adjustment there so that the folks that are coming from outside of the community are supplementing the folks inside of the community, rather than us just being the lowest, you know, costing rec program in the area.
Yeah, I would definitely back looking into that. I think that there's some reality to, you know, making sure that our people here come first, you know.
Appreciate that, and get rid of some of that delta.
Definitely like to look at that as well.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Strowman.
Can I reserve my comments to the very end?
Uh, sure. Pro Tem.
Um, good meeting tonight. We got to, I mean, a lot of these things, we came in here and there's a lot of long-term projects that haven't been resolved. Both the swimming pool and the skate park are on those lists of things that just hang heavy. And so, I think we have the start of success. Tomorrow, it'll go to the board with the swimming pool, so we'll just see how the school board feels about that as well. And then the skate park, finally something that is tangible and can move forward. And I love that we're resolving these things, and we are not the same council as we were five years ago or four years ago, and I love that we are creating, we are resolving those issues so we can move forward as a community and create a great community, instead of just hanging with things hanging heavy over us. And that's how we can thrive. Also, thank you for Sylinda, because that, that debt is one of those things that just hangs heavy, you can't do that much with that hanging heavy, and it's going to take some sacrifice, but there's a plan in action, and I think we're doing a great job up here. And I think us as council are, you know, I'm very proud of the conversations that we have, and we have differences of opinions, and we can freely and openly discuss those differences in, of opinions, and we can walk away as friendly coworkers. And I'm just very proud of our town, I'm very proud of this council and our staff, and where we are today for that. And in light of some things that have happened over the last week, I think that it's very important to support the freedom of speech and, and support dialogue that doesn't necessarily have agreeing that goes along with those, but we do need to encourage people to keep talking about, you know, the, the solutions to problems and how we move forward and what we do. And it is important that we continue to talk and we continue to discuss and we continue to support each other, even when we do not agree. So, very proud of today, very proud of you guys, and I appreciate all of you. So, that's all I have for today.
Okay, I will go, and then I guess you can finish it.
I can, no, I can.
I'll give you the floor.
I can go.
All right, then go.
Okay. So, yeah, Councilmember K said a lot, what I was going to say about the meeting with Senator McNerney regarding PG&E rates and SSJID, that was a really good meeting, made him aware of some things that he wasn't aware of, which was pretty eye-opening. But, and Mayor Pro Tem stole what I kind of wanted to touch on, but last week was a tough week, across the board. And, you know, I, I know the community knows this, but just as a friendly reminder, we, we all really, the five of us, as well as city staff, really care about this community. But outside of sitting up here, we are, we work for insurance companies, we're in construction, some of us are veterinarians, some of us are childcare providers, but we're all community members at the end of the day. And the democratic process, even though we don't always necessarily agree, is to promote civil discourse, or political discourse, and to have an open, candid discussion, even though we may not always agree. That being said, political violence is not acceptable. And I believe that the best way to honor all people is to, especially in the political arena at the local level, is to recognize that we may have a difference of opinion, but the bottom line is, we respect the position and where they're coming from, and try to work together for the benefit of all the community. And I believe that that's the legacy Charlie Kirk would have wanted to leave. So, I think we're very blessed within the City of Escalon, because we can have disagreements, but we work together. And working together is what is going to drive us together as a community, as a council, as a government, as a staff, and hopefully, as a nation. That's all I want to say.
Well, it's hard to beat that. I think everything that I was wanting to say or even didn't think of saying has been said, so have a good evening.
Sorry.